Newington Board of Education to order on Wednesday, October 10th at 7:00 PM. Arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and where it is being justice for all.
We are going to start this evening with the presentation of awards proclamations, and we have two this evening, so we'll start with the resolution honoring school cafeteria staff. And here with us is Dana Markovitz, our Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Colleen Cody and Cindy Carlon from Newington High School. This is a resolution honoring Newington School cafeteria workers dated October 10th, 2018. Whereas Wednesday, October 10th, 2018 has been proclaimed as Newington School Cafeteria Workers Day, and whereas the Newington School cafeteria workers prepare and serve an average of 2,300 meals per day, and whereas the Newington School cafeteria workers follow local and state health standards when preparing meals, and whereas the Newington School cafeteria workers prepare meals following nutritional guidelines established by the United States Department of Agriculture in state Connecticut, and whereas the Newington School cafeteria workers have shown dedication and conscientious performance when serving school lunches. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 10th, 2018 as Newington School Cafeteria Workers Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington cafeteria workers on this very special day. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. And the resolution is signed by all of the members of the Newington Board of Education. I do want to say thank you for all of your hard work. Not only is food one of the more important parts of learning, because no one learns well in an empty belly, but the connection that you make with students in the cafeterias and those of us who have been through Newington's cafeterias, those who have kids going through them, we know firsthand, is just another part of our amazing school community. We're so happy to recognize you today for all the hard work you do to make this such a special presentation. And I'd open up to further board comment on the resolution. Dr. Braverman?
I just want to say my most recent foray into the cafeterias was the snowstorm in October, whatever year that was, Halloween. And you guys were fabulous. We lived there for like a week because we had no power. Food was wonderful, and so were you all, so thank you.
For the board, Mrs. Guyan?
I did not go to school in Newington, and we actually didn't even have a hot lunch program in my school. But when I heard other kids talk about it at that time, the lunches were a lot of french fries and stuff. And now, when I go into the schools or when I see the menus, I am amazed at the variety of foods and the... Yeah, I'll go with variety. There's so many interesting options, and there's always new things coming up. It's not like the same things are there every week, so I thank you for putting in the effort to create a menu that is enticing to kids and giving them different kinds of options so that they have a well-balanced meal and they have, again, provides them with that energy that they need for the rest of the day, and also what Josh said is those connections, which we all know is one of the most important things we can give kids. I appreciate all of that you do for them in that regard, too. Thank you.
Mrs. Strohs?
I wasn't going to talk tonight, but when I heard you guys were on the agenda, I had to. So I have three kids who go through the schools here, and when they were little, I'd go in, and the food that you served was amazing. I'd be so excited for like fresh fruit, but whatever you guys have done, my kids eat healthy, and they make me make the food that you make. So I had to learn how to make orange chicken and some salmon thing, so kudos to you guys. You do a great job.
Mr. Brandon?
So this morning, I told my daughter Rose, who's in kindergarten at Patterson, make sure that you thank Mr. Tong, who's the bus driver, and you thank the cafeteria workers. So when she came home, I said, "So, did you thank all the cafeteria workers?" And she looked at me very confused, and she's like, "I thank them every day, but you said Mr. Tong was going to be in the cafeteria." So I told my whole class that my bus driver was going to be in the cafeteria, and they should thank him. So if she didn't thank the Patterson crew, thank you. But just to go back to everybody's kind of past, my favorite part in elementary school, and I did not go here, was the rib sandwich, which is like awful, right? Like, it's like one of the worst things probably that... Yeah, so when... No, we don't. So, you know, when my parents would ask me about lunch, and that would be like my highlight, right? So I asked Nora, who's my third grader in Patterson, and it's always about who she talked to in the cafeteria. It's always about Ms. S. who helped her with the water. It's about Ms. Teresa and the line, and I think that that just goes to show that it's about more than food, right? Like, we're trying to teach the healthy habits, but it's also that relationship that the entire staff in the cafeteria has with our students, and that's very important, and it's probably most kids' favorite part of the day, and I don't think it's just the food. So, thank you.
Mrs. Stanton?
I don't have children going now, and I know that even back then, all the meals were great and the kids loved it, but just listen to the recent parents' testimonies, it's just, you know, a testimony itself, it's just great that, you know, the kids just love you and you are a comfort to them, and it's like, like Josh says, everyone needs a full belly to learn, and but just hearing these guys kind of makes it even, even more special. So thanks for all you do.
Any comments you'd like?
Well, on behalf of my staff, I just would like to thank you for this recognition, and I think just hearing the kind of words that you are speaking about, the program really means a lot. I mean, the staff is dedicated, and like, you can't stress that enough, and they really genuinely care about the kids, and we think it's first. And I just want to thank them for trying out all these new recipes. I think September, October, we had like 12 new recipes. And they were very hard speaking these recipes, making things from scratch, and the outcome isn't always the best from the students, and we give out samples, and we hope that we can reach more, but we're still trying, and they give it their all every single day. And I just want to say thank you, and thank you for the recognition.
Thanks.
For the conversation this year, I received my 25th year award, and Ms. Pam had handed me an award, and she had said, "How many students do you think you've served in all these years?" Well, I don't know how many exactly there were, but listening to this say there was 2,300 and something, I just have to say, "That's a lot of meatballs that I have made over these years."
I do also think it's important to know for any public tuning in, just always as a reminder that our food services program is self-sustaining. It is not something that you'll find in our budget book. It's not something that the board or the town supports through its money, so it's a fully self-sustaining program, works with the federal and state grants to make it that way, so it's really awesome that we can do that without an impact on the town at all. So, thank you again. We'll now move on to our second presentation of the evening, a resolution honoring school bus drivers. Here to accept that is Mr. Dean Barnes, our Director of Transportation Services, and we have several of our bus drivers with us. I'm not sure I see all of these names, but Al Cruz, Dale Roland, Kelly Santoro, Karen Martin, Jessica Nado Quillette, and Tracy Quals. And Mrs. Guyan will present that.
Come on down. Yes, thank you all for coming tonight. All right, it's green. All right, so I will read to you our proclamation. This is the resolution honoring Newington School Bus Drivers, October 10th, 2018. Whereas Wednesday, October 10th, 2018, has been proclaimed as Newington School Bus Drivers Day, and whereas the Newington School Bus Drivers have shown dedication and conscientious performance when driving students to and from school and to special activities, and whereas the Newington School Bus Drivers have outstanding driving safety records, and whereas the Newington... The Newington School Bus Drivers maintain a close working relationship with school staff and parents, and whereas the Newington School Bus Drivers actively participate in community affairs and show a willingness to go above and beyond the workday. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 10th, 2018 as Newington School Bus Drivers Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing our gratitude to Newington School Bus Drivers on this very special day. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. Since I have the microphone, I get to say my bit first. So you guys, we've spent a lot of time talking about buses this past year and in the last several months, and you guys have been there just kind of waiting to see what was going to happen, and I appreciate your flexibility, and, you know, we are really grateful that you are there with us every day for our students, like I said, with the cafeteria workers. The connections that you make with students is really important, and we've been with them for many years, and I know that I see drivers, I always wave, and they're probably like, "Who's that waving?" I wave at every bus when I go by, because it's important, you're part of the community and you make a big impact for our kids, so thank you.
So I really wasn't going to talk, but being that I gave the cafeteria workers a conversation, so I have a mom of three, scariest thing ever, as a kindergarten mom has put the kids on the bus, never felt nervous with you guys. My kids love you. I think my husband has like a little bit of a crush on the bus drivers, too. He gets on the bus, he's always out there waving hi. You guys do a phenomenal job, and I appreciate conversations with my kids when I come home and they say, "I miss the bus, I was walking home, but someone else picked me up." So you guys put the kids first, their safety first, and I definitely appreciate it as a mom, so thank you.
I will echo one thing Emily said, which is that we've talked about buses more frequently than I'd like to at these meetings, but the work that we do as a transportation department is so important. My personal time as a student taking the bus in Newington was with Mrs. Malloy, who was my absolute favorite, and she took my sister as well, and, you know, you never forget feeling comfortable in a new environment, and you always felt comfortable on the bus. And I got to see Mrs. Malloy two years ago now, going door-to-door for an election, and she took one look out her door, who was knocking on the door, and she started crying, she was like, "Josh," and we had a big hug, and, you know, it's just a really special connection that a ton of people in Newington have because of the longevity of our bus drivers, of how what kind of connections you have with our students, and, you know, it's really just a testament to the importance of the program, that it's, you know, really from the start of our students' day until the end of their day, they start, a lot of them start their day with their bus driver. That's part of their school day, that's part of their learning, it's part of their socialization, and it's part of making sure parents feel safe having their kids go to school in Newington and why parents want to come here, and that's a big part of it, why. So thank you so much for all you do, everything you do above and beyond just driving from door-to-door, because it's a lot more than that, so thank you.
I would just like to say you're the Newington School District's first smiling face in the morning, and the same smiling face in the evening when you drop them back off. And doing this job is not one of the easiest jobs in the world, but congratulations to you all and to the department, and appreciate all your help. Continue with excellent work. Thank you.
So if I bring it back to Mr. Tong now, I did share this on social media, but for those that didn't, it just really kind of speaks to the program itself, and so it was the second day of school, Rose is in kindergarten, you have to wear the name tag. Part of that reason is not only the teachers, but the bus driver, get them on the right bus. So, second day, I do all the mornings, second day, walk into the bus, Rose says goodbye, she gets on the bus, and I have that oh-blank moment, and I realize I did not put her name tag on her. I run home, and I tell Mrs. Klimas, "I forgot the name tag," so we were all good there. But before I ran home, I'm like, "Oh, my God, oh, my God," and then I hear, "Hi Nora, hi Rose," from Mr. Tong, second day. Now, I still get their names messed up, and I've known them their entire lives, but he knew, and, you know, that moment was, you know, I've always felt safe with them, there's never been a problem, but that's a moment that for anybody that, like Ms. Stroh said, if there's concern from a kindergarten parent, that's a story I'm going to tell. You know, this is not just a ride to and from school for the sake of turning a profit. This is for the safety of our kids, best interest of our students, and the best interest of the parents, and it's an awesome program, and I am just, I'm just so grateful that we are one of the lucky districts that has its own transportation system. So thank you very much.
One of the things that comes to mind is, like, my kids went years ago with Josh's just... But the thing about your department altogether is you all have a constant that has been out throughout all the years, and that constant has calmed down to all the new people. So like the whole departmental attitude about being warm and fuzzy for the kids in there, and I know I wouldn't be able to drive on a bus, because I know it's noisy, I know it's crazy, and you're looking in the mirrors, you're trying to drive, you don't know what kid's out of the seat, and I really appreciate the fact that you're all safe and you all embrace them, and that your department over the years has always been like that. So thank you for that, and thank you for the veterans for passing down that constant to all the new hires. Thank you.
So I want to thank you for doing your job so well, providing that first interaction with the kids in the morning, and I'm so impressed with you backing those buses into those skinny spaces. There is no way that that would ever happen if I was driving, so I better not. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of this department, the unsung heroes oftentimes are not appreciated as often as we like to hear, but it is always wonderful to have a board, it's always wonderful to hear from parents. Since I've been here, since July, I've received several emails, several comments about this team of people, and these drivers who dedicate their lives as not just a career, it's an experience, it's something that they do because they love to do it. And to hear from parents so pleased, and the teamwork and the effort, and drivers that went out and found their children, the kindergartners, and went visiting their houses before school ever started, to introduce themselves to their students that were going to be riding their bus, just so that they knew that driver before they got on the bus. I found that astounding, that I've been in this industry for over 20 years, and I have never seen a driver do that, and I have heard of several of these drivers that did, and so it's become a family, something that I'm proud of, to work with these great folks and with this Board of Ed, and to have a department that really cares, and it's not just a job, it's an experience, and it's something that they live every day. And in our opening meeting, I shared and echoing some of the thoughts that you have shared, we're the first smile, we're the first hello from behind these students' seat, and when they get off the bus, to feel safe, to feel secure, to ride that bus every single day, to and from school, which is one of the biggest and most important parts of their lives. So I'm glad to be part of that, and all of the folks I'm afraid to work with.
I've been a driver for a very long time, and this is only the third place, a lot of drivers go from place to place, but this is the third one, being my move to Rhode Island, two Connecticut, and then two here. We don't just drive the bus, we listen to the kids. We talk to them about their day, we help them with their homework, and like you said, it's always a hello in the morning and a goodbye in the afternoon. We're not just the bus driver, we're caretakers, we're babysitters, we do a lot, and this totally means a lot to us because we're actually being recognized for it, so we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
What else? Thank you so much.
And thank you all for coming out, we appreciate it. We're going to move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities, and our phones are open at 860-665-8736. Seeing no public coming forward and no phone calls coming in, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Dr. Braverman, if you would read that.
Sure. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Those are minutes from the special meeting on September 20th, 2018, and the regular meeting September 26th, 2018.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyan. Does anyone have any questions or corrections to the agendas as the minutes as presented? Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on, we have no old business, we'll move on to new business, standing committee information items. We had a student policy committee on September 26th. Dr. Braverman, am I right that that meeting was about all of the policies we're going to discuss later on in the meeting? Okay, so we will talk about that meeting in depth later on. There was also a curriculum committee meeting on September 12th. Mrs. Guyan, would you like to chat about that a little?
Sure. We had a lovely meeting. We had Mr. Brian Kelly come in and talk to us about the instrument program, actually the rental program at the elementary, actually, I guess, elementary, middle, and high school levels. It's a program that we offer for our students to make it affordable, for students to play instruments in town. When you rent privately, it is extremely expensive, so we've been able to offer this to our families, and the prices remain the same for at least the last 20 years, I think, if not longer, that's as far back as anyone could remember, and those prices haven't allowed us to maintain our inventory. I'm like, it's not a fleet of instruments, our inventory of instruments.
Buses on the brain.
Hey, so the fees that we brought in paid for all of the repairs going out, so it was a self-sustained program. And again, the fees had not changed. Unfortunately, in the last couple of years, the cost of repairs has increased, so we just talked about how to increase that price just a little bit for our families at this time, and so that is what happened, actually. They increased it slightly for the coming year, and now that should be enough to, again, cover all of the repairs for the instruments, so we can have instruments in good working order for all of our students, and we can continue to have a wonderful music program.
Thank you, Mrs. Guyan. I caught the last 10 minutes or so of that meeting, and from what I saw from the research that was done about other districts and private business that are renting instruments, Newington has a great bargain for what we provide to the students, so even with an increase, that's still happening, so that's good. Any other questions for Mrs. Guyan or anything like that about that meeting? Mr. Sylvia?
Do we have sufficient instruments for all of the interested participants?
No. There is, we have a lot of instruments, but not enough for all of them. Some have to do, some students do have to rent privately.
And how do we discern between who gets to benefit from our great rates and the private? Is it a roll of dice?
So a lot of the ones that are rented are the more unique instruments that we just don't have for anyone who's playing that instrument?
Also, there's, for example, there are a lot of students that play violin, so I think at the elementary level, I think they prioritize those, and I'm not positive, my understanding is they prioritize elementary school students then as they progress.
Right.
It changes, the availability changes.
Violin, like, and things like violin, or there are a lot of, there are certain instruments that have a lot of students who wind up taking more private lessons as well, who then get the instruments, so they have one of their own, so it kind of naturally leads to some of the students having their own instruments anyway.
Thank you.
Mrs. Strohs?
They do let the parents know if the child picks an instrument that's not available, and they can pick a different instrument. So just, I know as a mom of a supposed musician, she's amazing, she really is actually a very good musician, but when she was younger, she really had her heart set on violin. We were told if she did violin, we'd have to go to a private company, there weren't enough, she could have chosen to pick something different, but now, she's amazing, and she owns her own violin. It's very exciting.
Clearly, that's not, I mean, we would love to be able to offer all instruments to all students, it's just, we are not, so we do the best we can.
Is it Audrey?
Yeah.
Okay, Audrey, welcome, welcome to your first board meeting. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I've been playing the violin since elementary school, and once you get to the older levels, students usually want to have their own instrument, and so that opens up spaces for other students to be able to play an instrument they maybe wouldn't have been able to before.
Thank you. Mr. Tufel, did you have something?
Yes. Do we have a program, in other words, if a person in town has the instrument, they can turn it into our music program, volunteer?
Yes, we do accept music instrument donations. We just ask that the instrument be in fairly good condition so that we wouldn't have to spend a lot of money rehabbing it for student use.
Thank you.
Anything further? Mrs. Guyan?
I just wanted to say, welcome, Audrey, and very nice job at your first meeting, jumping in with some important information. Well done.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was, that was more of a lively discussion of that curriculum committee meeting than I expected, but I do think it emphasizes how important of an emphasis we put on music in the district, which is one of my, was one of my favorite parts of going through school. We will now move on to our student reps with a report. Dami, welcome back. Audrey, welcome. Audrey, if you wouldn't mind saying like four words about you, like what grade you're in, you know, something like that, likes, dislikes. You play the violin.
I do. I'm Audrey, I'm a senior, I'm in student council, obviously. I'm in charge of pep rally this year and community outreach, so we're going to talk about in our speech report about some of the community outreach we've done so far.
Fantastic, please, go ahead.
Okay, so this year, in conjunction with all the schools in our district, we... Okay, I'll get to that after, then. Oh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
You have to speak right into it.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. These are directional microphones, so if you're not speaking directly into it, it doesn't pick up, and it's less for the amplification in the room than it is for anyone watching online or over the TV.
Okay, so last Friday kicked off the beginning of our Spirit Week and Heavenly Hats at Newington High School, so so far, we've had great participation from both students and the teachers, and we allowed students to participate in different Spirit Week, Spirit Days, and it created a fun environment to learn, because everyone's in a good mood, good mood, showing like how much they love NHS, and just like brings, I feel that it brings the students and the teachers closer together. And so on Friday, we had Color Wars, and each grade was assigned a different color to wear, and teachers were also given color to wear. And yesterday, we had Culture Day, where students were asked to wear something that represents their country, or they could dress like in red, white, and blue for America, or for like colors from their parents' country, or like where they're from, and many students even dressed up in traditional garments, which was really cool to see, and I think it definitely tapped into one of Newington's core values of diversity and being more aware of the world around us, so it was really cool to see that and learn about other cultures. And today was Hawaiian and luau day, so a lot of kids showed up, some kids showed up in grass skirts, which I say took a lot of courage, but it was very funny to see like people wearing nice lays and grass skirts, and a lot of kids... And a lot of kids wore like Hawaiian print shirts or just like nice world print shirts. And tomorrow is Decades Day where students can choose any time period in history to dress from. So, we'll definitely be seeing a lot of 70s probably. And Friday is Blue and Gold Day, and that's also our pep rally day and the homecoming game after that.
So, this year, in conjunction with all the other school districts, we did a combined fundraiser for Heavenly Hats, which is an organization that distributes and raises money for children that have lost their hair because of cancer or other medical conditions. And they give them hats so they can feel less insecure about the loss of their hair. And this year, we actually raised over $1,000 between all the Newington public schools. So, on Thursday and Wednesday of last week, the student council representatives collected a dollar from homeroom to anybody who was interested in donating money. And so, on Friday, along with Color Wars, the students wore hats. And students always wear crazy hats. And so, it's very nice to see it. And it really brought everybody together and it was a way to honor this organization. Yeah. And all the money we're going to collect during pep rally is also going to go towards Heavenly Hats, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the student reps' report? Mrs. Stam?
I just have to say, I was really excited because I belong to a community youth group and there was a retreat weekend. And one of the activities was to make a beat, whatever we wanted. Like, we had a lot of other really important activities to do with kids. But I was sitting down with a freshman from Newington High School and she's like, I don't know what to do. She goes, "Oh, it's Spirit Week, you know, next week and I have nothing." And so, she made this cool, like, you know, yellow and gold thing. And it was just like really kind of neat because it really went just from your school community out. We were in Camp Pazen and then she was like, "Oh, my God, I can do this." And it was just, it made me feel good. I'm like, "Oh, my God." I know, you know, kind of connected. And it was nice that a freshman actually was like thinking ahead and that means that you really promoted it. Because I know freshmen are like, "Oh, I'm not going to do this. It's not cool. I don't know how cool this is." But I was glad to hear that she did that, so thanks.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend you on the efforts that the school has done for the hats program. I have some personal individuals that I know that are benefiting from your efforts. So, thank you so very much for that. It's very heartwarming.
Dami, did you want to add something?
Just to back to what, Ms. Stam? Sorry. Back to what you said about how that freshman girl was just like spreading the spirit. Sorry. I definitely feel that Spirit Week, like I remember sitting in class on Friday. And so, I'm a junior, so all juniors' hats were like all white. And I was like decked out in white sneakers, white jeans, all white shirt. And I just remember sitting in math class and my teacher called on me and then she was like, "How's your day going?" And I was like, "You know, I'm just so happy today." And everyone started laughing. I was like, "No, it's like something about Spirit Week." It's just like, it brings us closer together and it just like, that definitely radiates off of all the students. So, like, that just reminded me when you said that the girl was like very happy, that reminded me of that.
That's great. Any other questions or comments for student reps? Okay. We will continue on. And Audrey, you already chimed in. We made Dami chime in last week or a couple of weeks ago. But if there are topics that we're discussing and you guys are, if you're able to stay for the meeting, I certainly encourage that. I think it's an interesting experience for you. And you should have all of the materials that we're going through. If there's something that you feel you can add or have a question about, please feel free to pop your hand up. And I'll do my best to make sure I look down to where you are and to give you time as well to ask any questions. You are members of the Board of Education, although you're non-voting members. You are actually members of the board. So, last year, we moved our student reps up to the table and they were an incredible asset to us. So, we look forward to you guys both being that way as well. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for your report. If there's ever a time you need to leave, you don't need to ask permission. You don't need to do anything. Please, if you have other things, homework or sports or music or whatever, you can just go. But if you can be here, please be here. So, thank you. Mr. Sylvia, something on that?
I just want to second what Josh just said. All right? It is very welcoming from our perspective to hear your perspective and to really get what you think are critical items that are of importance to you and the students. So, you are members of this table. And I really hope that you accept the invitation that Josh offered because we've had some nice lively discussions with prior members that you're now taking their seats. And I personally am grateful that you're taking the time from your busy days to spend with us. So, thank you so much. And please, every word he said, use it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item one, which is a presentation on English Learners Program Services. I am ecstatic about what's this presentation that's going to happen. I'll tell you for a couple of reasons. First, I'll introduce everyone who's coming up. We have Merrillena Guglioso, who's the Director of Student Services. Tom Myler, who's an English Language Learner and the English Language Learner Department Program Leader. Also a current and a former student, who I met briefly in the hallway and I hope will introduce themselves in a moment, Luis and Pedro. Two reasons why I'm very excited. One, Tom Myler was my second grade teacher. It was his second year of teaching, we think. He was also a former Newington Teacher of the Year. I don't want to say it was because of me that he became a Teacher of the Year, but I had a great time in his class a very long time ago now. And so, you know, I'm happy to see Tom here presenting. Other reason why I'm very excited, aside from the fact that this is an interesting subject, is that one of the new things for the school year, we're going to have five to 10-minute presentations, discussions on things that are actually happening in school and educational theories and education in general. One thing any board member will know is that generally, we don't talk about education all that much around this table as a full board. And I think it's incredibly important that we get back to what we're supposed to be doing, which is learning about education, talking about education, learning everything we can about our school system and being better informed so we can inform the community about the great work that's being done. So, this is our first presentation. Ms. Maraca has planned out probably the whole year already because that's how she does it. And I'm very excited. So, I'll turn it over to our guests this evening to introduce themselves and take it away.
Hello, my name is Pedro and I came here about four years ago. It's going to be four years on the 17th of this month. And I am, I do speak English. I do write and read. But I couldn't have, I couldn't have been able to do it without Mr. Myler or somebody that was there for helping me. And I know why we're doing this presentation. It's because we need somebody else. But we need somebody else that actually cares and actually cares about our students. Because if we're going to hire somebody that doesn't care, we're not going to learn. He need, Mr. Myler cares a lot about us. He does everything for us. He tries to help us so much and I'm really grateful I have teachers like Mr. Myler.
My name is Luis. I already graduated from high school. I'm from the American Republic. I, when I came here, I didn't speak any English, way different than him. So, I needed help. I needed, basically, he was not somebody that taught me the English, but more of a family that actually made me feel like home and school because it's a whole different culture and all that. And yeah, EL class, I could basically say that helped me graduate from high school in a way. But yeah. Don't cry, please.
Thank you, Pedro and Luis. That was very kind. So, today, we're here because we want to hopefully get another EL teacher. So, what I've passed out to you is a handout that gives some trends or some stats on EL populations in the country, in the state, and then here in Newington. So, I'll take a couple of minutes and I'll go through that. But there's one thing I wanted to point out first was from an NPR interview article back in February of last year. And it's the third dot down into national statistics. It says, "Based on the most recent data available, NPR found that no matter where they go to school, most Els are struggling because they have little or no access to quality instruction tailored to their needs." So, I wanted to bring that up now because that's what we're looking to do, is tailor our instruction to the needs of EL students. Having said that, we'll look at national statistics. EL population is the fastest-growing population across the United States. You'll see back in 2004, it's 9.1 percent. Now, it's up to 9.4 percent, actually in 1415, and increased even more since then. It's a fastest-growing segment in the US public school population. And that box there that talks about the grade level, so the students that are K to 5, 85 percent even their Els are born here. 15 percent are foreign-born. That changes slightly when they're 6 to 12, when 38 percent are foreign-born. That adds a twist to everything because we're, these kids are now in middle school and high school and they need to learn English as they're learning the curriculum. So, it's a really tall order. These two are two people that did that. We go down to the state statistics and the population in 2011, 12, Els made up 5.3 percent. They're now at 6.4 percent in 14 and 15, and even more so now. We've had an influx of a lot of students from Puerto Rico after the hurricane last year. So, we've seen that across the state, mostly in our larger cities. So, we know that trend. It's growing nationwide, statewide, and in Newington also. So, there's two parts of the district information. The first box on the bottom of the page is basically looking at our students. We evaluate the students by their English proficiency level. So, there's five different levels, from Level 1 beginning to Level 5, which is proficient. So, that's how we look at students. A Level 1 student is very beginning and they need a lot of instruction. They need to learn the content as well as English. So, we look now, we have 32 kids out of about 216 that are at that Level 1. Majority in kindergarten, but we have many in the middle school and high school, which again adds another twist to it. On the back of the page, I've taken a look at our statistics from 2007 up until now. So, 2007, at the very bottom, we had 162 kids or 3.6 percent of our population. As you see, we go up in years, it continuously grows. Up until this year, without rough numbers that I put together at the beginning of this year, to 5.4 percent of our population or 216 kids. They range from K to 12, from being proficient, nearly proficient, to a Level 1, very beginners. So, they have very, very, very needs. So, not only do we have an increase in the number of our students, but the way we instruct our EL students has changed. Research shows that students need to learn English simultaneously to learn the content. It's important for these kids to be in our classrooms, accessing the curriculum, interacting with teachers, interacting with each other in order to learn. So, that's a tall order. So, what we do now is we push into the classrooms and make the curriculum accessible to the students using different strategies. That shows a different way as opposed to years before, we'd pull kids out and give them instruction. We're now instructing them in our curriculum. They're part of our school and they're part of everyone's classroom. So, in order to do that, it's tough. So, we're pushing into classrooms and we're trying to group kids together. So, we're getting into the same classes and it makes a big difference to the kids and it's harder on the teachers. So, we're looking to kind of build our army.
Mrs. Guyon?
How many of there are you, Mr. Myler?
We have four EL teachers.
Four EL teachers?
Our caseloads range from 45 to 60 kids. And we're in, I'm in three schools.
Before you said you need another Mr. Myler. Good luck. He's kind of one of a kind. We would be so lucky to have somebody half as amazing as he is, I think. So, I second your wanting somebody like him.
Do you know how many languages are spoken by our ELL students?
Over 20. So, we don't have a majority-minority or minority-majority. We, we have majority are Spanish speakers, but we have Spanish, we have Portuguese, we have Malay Aman. We have, we have two kids who came from Laos this year. So, we have, we run across the world.
Dr. Braverman?
Many times, the kids speak, learn English, but their parents do not. Is that still the case?
That's very much the case. We're trying to work on a project now where we just put up the Baroque Foundation to get money to buy books in native languages to encourage parents to read to their children in their native language. The more they develop their native language, the stronger their ability to learn English will be. So, we're trying to work on both ends and have the families stay together.
Right. And then the kids become the translators for everyone who calls to the house or stops by.
And that's an awesome responsibility for kids, to be eight years old and translating for your parents at doctors or schools. It's very intimidating.
Do we use any type of services to talk to our ELL students' parents that don't speak English?
We have contracted with an interpreter service. And we do have those interpreter services available for most of our legal meetings. We also have a great cadre of parents within the district that we, for non-legal meetings, but so also to make connections for the parents in their own communities, that they can hook up with families who are similar in cultures. Dami, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to, you said that you have like students who speak like over 20 languages that they speak. How do you, what is it like hiring, like what are you looking for when you're hiring someone? Is it, do you have like a certain set of languages that you would like for them to speak? Or do you just like want them to speak, be able to learn any language quickly? So, if like a new case arises that someone speaks a different language?
EL teachers don't necessarily need to speak other languages. It's great if they do, but they don't have to. What you're actually trained to as an EL teacher is to learn strategies and how to teach children who speak all different languages how to learn English. So, you're looking at how you can make things accommodate them in the classroom. It's very different. So, you have to understand how languages work. A Chinese person has a very different language structure than we have in English or in Portugal or Spain. So, you have to understand where they're coming from, say, "Okay, they're going to have trouble with this sound or this construction of a sentence," and then be able to back into that.
And do you think that like maybe you could have students that would like, kind of like, I guess, shadow these teachers? Because like, that sounds really interesting. I know a lot of people.
We welcome you. We've had high school students that have come into the classroom and they've helped us. Was it Maria? Maria was there. Who came in who showed an interest. And they had an interest, they would come in and actually on their free period and work with the kids in the classroom. And we've had these guys go out to the elementary school and read books to them during March. So, we're trying to get everyone out.
Mrs. Rose?
Of the 45 to 60 students on your caseload, how many of them are at proficiency-ish? I know you can't give me an exact number. And how does that compare to like a special ed teacher's caseload?
It all depends on the proficiency levels. So, if we're looking at the elementary school, we have the kindergartners coming in that a majority are going to be at a Level 1 or a Level 2. So, it's, I really can't say per se. It would depend on the school. But the majority are probably right or in the intermediate, the Level 3 in most schools. But each school is its own case. We just got a new student today at Martin Kellogg.
I know, it's fluid. I'm just trying to get an idea.
Percentage. I can actually share those with you by school.
I kind of have, I'm just, you know, 45 to 60 kids sounds outrageous on a caseload. So, I'm just trying to figure out of that caseload, you know, how many of them are your, you know, your beginning and how many are your early, because those are the ones who are going to need the most intensive help in the classrooms. Whereas by the time a kid gets to a 4 or 5, yes, they still need strategies and help, but obviously, it's not as demanding. So, I'm just trying to get an idea of the teacher-student ratio, basically. You know, as we're talking, you know, new teachers and where to put them and things like that, so.
The, and the needs are very different. If you talk about the needs of the middle school and the high school versus the elementary school, all children are English language learners. But when you're at the middle school and high school, we're expecting them to meet the content or the curriculum goals and they don't have English yet. So, that's very different than a kindergarten where I, being a kindergarten teacher 15 years, consider all kindergartners ELs because they're all learning English. We still support them and help them learn, but it's just slightly different because of the, at the middle and high school years, it's different. In order to learn English, there's two ways to learn English. We have BICS and CALP. BICS are basically those basic intercommunication skills that you learn to say hello, answer the phone, order your pizza. But academic language is different. So, in order to really master BICS, it takes about three years, one to three years. To master academic language, it takes five to seven. And research now is showing it's more like nine years. So, we have kids coming into the middle school and the high school now that are never going to get academic language. So, we've got to do as much as we can to support them and build them. So, it's, each case is very different. But I can share with you the actual specific numbers for each school of what teachers have at what percentages. I just don't have it here in front of me.
I had a quick question. Then we're going to go to Mr. Branda, then Mrs. Guyon, and then we'll take any others after that. Is there a standard, like a national standard or an EL? Is there a standard, like a, a national standard or an ELL specific standard for what a caseload should look like broken down by leveling, or is that, is that not something that's out there?
EL is very different. Although we're mandated to have EL support in our schools, they don't give much support past that. So it looks very different and very, in very different districts. Unfortunately, in most districts.
It's similar to?
Yes.
Is there, is there any kind of standard that we look towards for what we want to build towards?
Again, even when we look to see how many, how many unit hours we can give a student based on their proficiency level, there's nothing standardized. So we sometimes look at similar districts. We look at districts that are doing well and we see everyone is different. Some schools, depending on their population, can have a teacher in a school. Others are like us, where we, where we share and jump around.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
Thank you. You had mentioned that you go into three schools. Is that because you're you, or do the other EL teachers do that as well? And then would the one that you hope would be hired do the same?
Right now, we've, the way we've divided our schools, we have four teachers in seven schools, so it doesn't really even out that well. So we try to look at the numbers in each school. Our elementary schools have greater numbers. So three of the teachers are, are housed in the elementary schools where they share one school. They have their own homeschool and they share a, a second school. So everyone travels to two schools.
So they do.
So the numbers in the elementary, in the middle and high school were not as great, so that's why we combined those. And they share similar experiences in those schools. And the schedule at the middle school is a, a schedule unto itself, trying to figure that out.
So they're not necessarily booked based on proficiency, kind of what Ms. Stroes was saying, it's more based on just school?
And numbers.
And then numbers. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Guyen?
So it's, must be wonderful when you're in the classroom with the students as they're trying to, as they're learning this academic language. But as you said, they're not, if you get here in middle school, you're never going to get to that level where, where you've got it all. So how do these kids, maybe you guys can't answer this, what do you do when your ELL support teacher is not there? How do you, what do you do? That, that's terrifying for me. I think I.
I'm actually one of the students that actually passed the test and I'm very proud of myself for that.
You should be.
Uh, I do admit, I'm in English ten right now and I am struggling. It's, it's hard. It's not easy. For me as myself, it's, it's not easy because it's a lot of reading and I'm not perfect. I, I have a student, there's a student here that met me when my first day of school here. She knows how much I, I've grown in English.
Yeah, I can add to that. When he first got here, he didn't speak much English at all. No one could really talk to him that well. Much better now.
I would say for somebody that doesn't speak English, it's impossible. It basically is impossible because how can you get something that you've never seen in your life? So for me, for me, for example, I didn't speak any English two thousand and thirteen that I came here and, and I did my first freshman year at Cromwell, then I came here. And I just couldn't do the English. And it's something as Mr. Myler was saying, something that you need, something that you need if you want to grow in this country, is, is the English. So I'm just saying, somebody that is just one person in a whole high school with how many students, uh, you probably get to help two people that actually do good in the English department or whatever, but he's just one teacher. And I think as one teacher, he works twice because he has to teach the English plus the content. So for example, Mr. Myler stayed with me and I would understand it better if it wasn't in Spanish, but he would, he would, he would explain me the homework and then actually what the teacher was trying to say in the class. So in my perspective, if you don't know it, you don't know it. It's just impossible to actually understand what you're doing unless you have somebody there that actually speaks a language, you know?
So when you're in class and you, you have Mr. Myler there and he helps you through part of it, and then he has to go to other students, obviously, and then you're in class just hoping to catch some of it? I, I, I can't even imagine.
The thing is that, and you tell me if I'm wrong, it's something of working with the teacher, with my teacher, him and me. So it's, it's a three-way type of thing. So he will basically talk to the teacher, see what I saw that day. The teacher sits sometimes with me and trying to explain, because how many students are in a class? Like seventeen probably? Probably sit with me five minutes telling me what to do or, and I'll be like, yeah, sure, I don't want to, I want to fit in. I'll just say, yes, I know how to do it and, but it's, it's more about talking to the, it's, it's a job, it's a team, it's three people, you know? But I didn't get it. I didn't get anything.
Dr. Braverman?
Are the students grouped by native language? So there's a Spanish ELL or Polish ELL?
We don't have enough of that to do that. There, there's a law that if you have twenty of the same native speakers, you need to have a bilingual class or something for them. We don't have that. So we don't group because sometimes, especially in the high school, there might be one or two that speak different languages, they're in different grade levels and different proficiency levels. So what we're trying to do now, and working very hard at, we started doing is grouping our kids. So in the elementary school, we try and group three or four Ls by ability levels or by native language. Native language supports are key. So the more they speak in their native language to understand English, the better it is. That wasn't always a philosophy though. So we know now native language supports are really important. So we will try and do that. Last year, we were fortunate enough to put six, six kids in English nine? We had six kids in English nine, but they are in different grade levels. Because sometimes we look to see, will an EL class count towards their English requirements towards graduation? And from there, we were able to take them, we would see what they were doing in English nine, we would, I would see the targets or whatever they're studying and then I'd be able to go back and we'd work together. So sometimes the students would read, I'd read to them, we'd find a text in the native language, or we would just discuss it more. So you're taking them out of a larger classroom. And research shows that if Ls are with other Ls, they're going to talk more in longer utterances and say more than they ever would in a class of twenty. So that pulling them out or putting them in a small group really, really benefited them.
Interesting. So at the same time we're pushing in, we're also targeting different types of pullouts now?
Yes. So you're pushing in to see, to get the content and then we're going to bring them back out to get, teach them an hour and away with the instruction where they're going to get it and actually talk. Talking is key.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. Is, I'm ignorant on this very much, but so the questions are, is this a specific certification that, that a teacher has to acquire in order to be an L teacher?
Yes, there's, there's some, some pretty stringent training that goes along with that.
All right. So it's not a skill set that can be trained or shared internally through professional development, it's something that has to be acquired through certification process?
But yes, yes and no, because and, and, and I'm not the educator here, but the, the ELL teachers, I'm sure, are doing a ton of professional development with the classroom teachers to make sure that they're more aware of the strategies that are necessary to be used in their classrooms with their students who are Ls.
Okay.
So, so in that way, yes, that.
That's, that's a good, a very good point. So as part of our development, we are building capacity within, within our district, within our teachers. So we've done several different things. Wendy and I work together to make sure the ELs, the EL teachers are also receiving PD and what the classroom teachers are doing. So we're sharing that. We have a voice in the PD for the teachers to hear. We have put on Power School accommodations for the students so the teachers know by going onto Power School what the kids need at what proficiency level and what accommodations they need. Simple things like give me the notes ahead of time, cut down their homework, cut down the reading, show a video instead of having them read. So those accommodations are available. So as we're building and trying to push in and do different things, we're also trying to build capacity within our teachers.
So if I may ask, if it, it's an ideal world, you have a checkbook in your hand, how many Ls do you need? If you're teachers?
Oh.
You know, we can talk about that at budget time if you like.
Well, but it, it's important to me. I mean, are we so deficient that we're in need of ten, twenty? Or are we looking at fewer? I don't, I don't know the scale of the need.
I would say that one is definitely a good place to start. It would be great if we could have two. That would at least give us a little bit more of that, like train the trainer model too. It would be great if we could get one in every school because our population is growing and it is such a fluid number that we could say probably we would be okay with one for this year or one for next year. But then we may have another influx and so it's one of those moving targets that I think that you just need to keep looking at.
My last question though would be, I, I'm fortunate enough, let's just say I'm fortunate enough to have an L certification, but I, but I'm also have a certification as a math teacher, or I have a certification as an architect or whatever, right? So is it just a single certification level that the Ls have, or are they multiple certified? Multi-ple, whatever. They got multiple.
So for an L teacher, so I'm certified to teach K through six. I went back and got a master's in T-Sol, teaching English to speakers of the languages, which I'm certified K through twelve. So in order to teach as an L teacher, you need to have either a certification or another master's.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
On that. All right. And I appreciate you putting a scale to this. Thank you.
Mr. Brandon?
To, just really quickly, is this discussion about needing an extra teacher in a plans proposal? So this is just preemptive to the budget discussion?
Yes.
This is not like tomorrow where this is a plans proposal?
This will be one of your tough budget decisions.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And then maybe that helps you out there too. And the other question is, are EL students on mastery-based learning? Or is it, it is?
Same.
Okay.
Where every child is, is on, at its own, at their own place. We've got to individualize. So students that are coming here, they're not speaking any English, we're looking to do different things with them as they're learning English in the curriculum.
I would just like to add that Mr. Myler and Ms. Gugliello have also tried some different strategies. So last year was the first year that they used Rosetta Stone. And we used, we have an EL tutor and that tutor supervised students when Mr. Myler couldn't be there during a period, so that they used Rosetta Stone. We haven't really been able to shake out so much what the data would tell, how much progress student may, students made, but it is another resource that we have been trying because we have not had the staff. And so they are taking every opportunity to expand services. It's greatly appreciated.
Dr. Braverman?
Is it possible that we, if Rocky Hill had three Russian speakers and we had two, that we combine just for the first year till they get comfortable and, or that's too complicated?
The state's actually moving away from that. They're moving away from that segregated model. We used to have the old model where we usually, we used to pick up the kids and bring them all to one school. The movement really is to keep the kids in their environment, keep them in their communities and deliver the resources in their communities.
Well, thank you all so much for coming out. I appreciate the discussion about the, the changing model of, of pushing into the classroom and how we're developing those strategies. I'm sure this will not be a topic that we only talk about once this year. Louis and Pedro, thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate hearing from both of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll look forward to learning, that was, I learned so much tonight. We'll look forward to learning other things about other parts of our district as we move forward throughout the year. We will now move on to item number two, which is a discussion action item regarding, regarding reviewing and approving the plans for the Transition Academy, Helen Nelson Meeting Room, and the Board of Administrative Offices in the new Town Hall project. With us here this evening is Tom R. Carey, who is principal at QA and M Architecture, who is designing the building, has been working very closely with the town of Newington for quite some time. Thank you for sitting patiently. We appreciate, I hope you learned something tonight as well. And we appreciate you being here. I'll turn it over to you or to Pam or Lou or whoever wants to talk about what we're talking about.
I think Tom is ready to go, but I would have Lou give a small introduction first.
Town Hall Project, several months ago requested our assistance in pursuing a state grant for developing funding sources to help defray costs for the overall project. You know, as part of this work, Quisenberry, R. Carey, Melick is a firm needed to extend their efforts to properly address all of the necessary education specifications that were developed for this project, as well as addressing all of the Town Hall needs for the community center development they wanted to get done. So it's a dual-purpose project that serves both the general community needs as well as the Board of Education needs. At this time, there's two grant applications up for consideration. One of those is just for the Transition Academy because it's considered as school academic space, so it's an eligible item for full reimbursement by whatever grant formula is legislated for that year, while the Board of Administrative Offices in the Helen Nelson Room are the second project. And that is at fifty percent of the eligible rate because it's considered administrative space. So in putting all these into the blender, to come out with a successful project that'll be eligible for reimbursement to help the town is the goal. And Tom's done a great job, so I'll turn it over to him to tell us all about it.
All right. Thank you. So thanks for the opportunity. I trust you each had an opportunity to look at the proposed floor plans for all three of the departments. We've worked hand in hand with Lou and Pamela and Dr. Collins Pryor to put an approach together for each of the spaces that best reflects the program needs. The Transition Academy space is a program that's located on the first floor of the building, adjacent to its own dedicated drop-off area. One of the nice things about reallocation in the new building is that site circulation will be improved dramatically. So now buses will be able to come and stage in this dedicated drop-off area, will not impede traffic from the rest of the site and will have no conflicts in that position. Access to the building will be direct through their own specific vestibule. And overall, we felt it was essential for the Transition Academy to be located in the facility because the students of the program work hand in hand with all the departments here at Town Hall. It's a wonderful program. The space itself mirrors the layout of the existing Transition Academy with a few minor differences, but for the most part, it functions in the same way to meet all the unique needs of the students in that program. One of the interesting changes when we tried to create a more efficient Town Hall building, this current building is approximately a hundred thousand square feet, is relatively inefficient, has seen pretty much the extent of its lifespan. So we're trying to make a building that's more efficient and the new building is about seventy-two thousand square feet. One of the ways we looked to find efficiencies were to either combine spaces or share spaces that could be mutually beneficial. And I think the proposed new Helen Nelson Meeting Room, Meeting Room and Town Council Chambers is a good reflection of that. So what, what it is, is those three spaces will be directly adjacent to each other with operable partitions, similar to this one in between all three of them. So that gives us the flexibility that the Helen Nelson Meeting Room proper can be opened up to an adjacent meeting room to handle overflow meetings when you have a larger crowd than your regular attendance, that can be used for training events and actually could be opened up to Town Council Chambers if you had a significantly larger meeting, let's say a budget meeting of that nature. So by combining all three of those spaces, we're not only finding efficiency, but we're finding opportunities to increase your flexibility in those spaces and do your training at that location if necessary. Finally, the third floor, which is in your package, will, like all the other departments in Town Hall are, what I, are experiencing what we call sort of a right sizing. Some of the existing Town Hall departments, like the Town Clerk's Office, are just monstrous, they have so much space. So we tried to look at each department and identify what the right program space allocation needs to be. This was an effort that we went back and forth with, we spent a lot of time with Lou and Dr. Collins, trying to identify how much space you actually have right now and how much space ultimately is the right mix. I'm grateful that Lou worked with us hand in hand to develop a very efficient floor plate that will allow, allow the space that's allocated at the third floor combined with the other spaces to meet your program needs. The third floor space is actually a very progressive floor plate. There is a central elevator core and stair core with a secured lobby space. So all patrons, visitors to the floor will enter through that secure lobby space and will only be granted access into the office behind if they're escorted or they're buzzed through security doors. So it provides a very high level of security for the office suites themselves. The perimeter of that core is open office space, which is the most efficient way to get staff and create workplaces. But it also, because it's open office space, it allows more physical square footage in each workstation. And then the perimeter of the office will have all of the offices for staff, directorial staff and shared meeting spaces. We've also been able to consolidate some of the space by using high-density mobile storage locations in numerous spots. By doing so, what we've done is beefed up the structure so that it can handle a greater density of storage. Finally, the proposed basement for the building will have proposed 2,000 square feet of dedicated storage for the Board of Education. One of the biggest challenges we saw was dealing with the storage requirements. All of the departments have unique storage requirements, but the Board of Education as a whole has significant storage requirements. Currently, I'd say you're struggling with that. If you've ever been in some of your storerooms or mechanical rooms or fan rooms, you have an understanding of that. You essentially have to walk over ductwork to get to some of the old records. So this facility will rectify that.
Mr. Sylvia?
Was there any other alternatives for storage other than on the third floor?
Well, we looked at a couple of different options, one of which is off-site storage, but that presents real functional issues. So originally, we looked at putting the majority of the storage in a basement storage area, which wasn't going to be satisfactory for the boards, the board programming.
It would not be satisfactory to whom?
Each of the individual tenants. So for instance, Special Education Department has storage requirements that have to be right in their department. Human Capital Development has certain files that need to be accessed directly a certain number of years. So we worked closely with Lou and at one point, Dr. Collins, to make sure that the right amount of storage was allocated on the floor and then the right amount of space was allocated in the basement. I call it a basement, but it's, should be very clear that it's a fully fit-out space, conditioned space, has full access by elevator right to your dedicated and secured storage area.
And so why did we put the high-density storage on perimeter walls, taking up glass space in perimeter? My practice and my experience has always been that high-density storage has always been built close to the core where it's structurally sound. I see two locations on the floor plan where we've taken high-density storage requirements. Basically, they look like glorified offices on the perimeter. I mean, is there a reason why we're blocking the people that are interior from having natural light? I mean, fundamentally, they're all in a cave. So, I mean, I'm not, my only objection, really and truthfully, is the glazing should allow as much natural light as possible into the interior spaces and it looks like from the floor plan, we've just built offices around the perimeter and then anybody that is fortunate enough to have a cubicle is in an interior space with no access to light.
So that's very observant. This, this floor plate is one of two typical floor plate options for what would commonly be seen in a high-rise building. There's two ways to approach it. One, you can put the open office at the perimeter of the building and put offices at the core or two, they put offices at the core and put open office, or offices at the perimeter and put open offices at the core. So this is a very common layout and as Mr. Silva mentioned, Sylvia, I'm sorry. The challenge is to make sure they get enough natural light into the core of the office. All of the perimeter of the building has a large number of windows and there are actually windows and viewing panes in the doors that allow natural light through the offices. If we have an opportunity to increase that, we certainly would take that into consideration. As far as the storage areas that are at the perimeter, what I can say is that some of that is associated with just trying to have the storage adjacent to that particular suite and put it in a position where it could be secured. And some of it is that in those two cases, maybe it was a little bit inconvenient. However, I will know that the storage area that you see that is to, towards the center of the building, I'll point it out on a plan. So this is the third floor plan. This, the storage area that I pointed out, while it's at the perimeter of the building, it actually looks over the roof, a low roof that's between the gymnasium and the Board of Education offices. There happens to be a tractor-trailer sized air handling unit on that roof to provide fresh air for the building. So that exposure really has very little natural light coming in because it's shaded by the mechanical equipment on that roof and there's really no view there. So in that particular location, it's, it's a solid position for the high-density storage. I think there was one other office, it's unfortunate, HCD storage, it's, you know, to some degree, yes, it's unfortunate that that smaller area has storage as opposed to an office, but programmatically, it was the best place to put it. So we accepted that. One challenge for this layout.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Braverman?
So we have plans for first floor, plans for third, what's on two?
Oh, so the second floor plate houses the municipal offices, mayor, town manager, finance officer, IT department, human, excuse me, I think I, let me check, I think I brought a copy of that plan so you could see it.
Nothing Board of Ed related, which is why it's not in our packet, but it's all municipal space.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, sorry. So this is the second floor plan. The upper portion of the plan has an entrance, oh, thank you. So the upper portion of the plan has a vestibule entrance that's directly adjacent from the library. So the building is built into the grade. So on the second floor, you enter from grade across from the library. There's an entry lobby there, which gives you access to the stairwell. And directly across is a multifunction meeting room, like L100 currently downstairs, can be divided into a couple of different spaces. The town manager's offices are to the right of the entrance with their reception area, services and Director Admin Services. And then to the left is the Finance and Finance Director's Office. The backside of the building is all Building Engineering Services, planning, zoning, fire marshal, engineer, building official and the building officials' offices. They have high-density storage as well to try and make their office space as efficient as possible. In the middle of the building are Human Services. Human Services will actually have its own dedicated entrance to accommodate a little more sort of personal privacy. So Human Services offices with all their counseling services and staff offices and then the food pantry is off of that entrance. Finally, at this level is the IT department, that's Paul Debutat's office and his staff are located in that position. So the second floor of the building is administrative offices for the town. And then the first floor of the building, in addition to the Helen Nelson Meeting Room and Town Council Chambers, has the community center, but in the center hall has direct off, direct access to all of the public interaction spaces. So registrar of voters, town clerk, the VALL, tax collector and tax assessor.
Mr. Brandon? Are those, you mentioned the security for the third floor, is that unique for the third floor, is that specific, like did we ask for that or is that going to be at the town level as well?
So that's something that's quite specific to the Board of Education offices. And because of the layout of the plan, it's easily afforded, there's only three security points that have to be provided. So it works quite well. Most of the first floor is very difficult to secure because the building, it's a building that operates 24-hour, well, not 24 hours, but 16 hours a day. The community center will be there, there'll be opportunities to separate from a security standpoint, the community center from the Town Hall functions in the evenings. So if you're having basketball programs or park and rec events, there's no reason for the general public to be, you know, wandering around the halls, yeah.
Thanks. Mr. Tufo?
The Transitional Academy, which entrance would they be using on the yellow outlined area?
So, I think I have a blow-up of that behind.
It's FFE 1.1?
So the Transition Academy, there's an entry vestibule right here. The buses drop off, they can come in and actually the door's not showing, but they'll have direct access egress from that secure vestibule. They can also go into the main building and come in through this door. Most of the time, I believe they'll actually use this door because the way the path of students is structured, in the morning you come in, you go here, but this is where the bus drop-off is directly adjacent to this door. You can access this space a number of different, a number of other ways though. You can enter at the end of the building through park and rec entrance, walk down the hall and come in, or you could go through the main entrance lobby and walk down the hall and get access to it. As I mentioned, the program is more, the students work hand in hand, so access to different parts of Town Hall is very important.
Any further questions while we have Lou presenting those plans before we let him sit down?
Vanna, Jackamoyds?
I wish, I was just going to say I wish this was all on video, but it is. So that's, that's great for Lou in the future. Any other questions from the board about the plans? Dr. Braverman? Microphone?
When we start deconstruction and new construction?
Oh, grateful, thank you.
You can, please have, please have a seat if you, if you like.
Great, so schedule is the reason I'm here with you this evening. We are planning to have a PCR meeting with the State Board of School Facilities, Bureau of School Facilities on October 30th. If we get our approval to proceed after October 30th, we are planning to have a submission to the construction manager on November 2nd with a page turn and review a few days thereafter. The goal is to have the project on the street for sub-trade bidding November 10, 12th, I think is the day they have in their schedule. We would receive bids by the middle end of December, just, just before the holidays, then the bids would be vetted. And the goal is that mobilization to the site by the contractors would start, I believe, February 1st. The first couple of months are preparation activities. So Transition Academy is going to be moved to the temporary, temporary classroom over by the senior center. And then that portion of the building, the wing of the building will be demolished and starting April, as soon as the weather breaks, that portion of the building will be removed. There'll be a temporary enclosure put on the remainder of Town Hall and then the new building will start to take shape in the parking lot directly in front of the building. The schedule to build the new building is about 12 months loosely. When the new building is constructed, everyone will move from Town Hall to the new building. Then the building, once everyone's moved, the building will be demolished and the space between the new building and what will be the police station, because the police station will left remaining, will become the new parking and drop-off area for Town Hall. And that'll take about six months. So all in, the demo of the building and the site work is about six months worth of work, the total project's about 18 months.
Thank you. Are there further questions before we entertain motions? And just as a follow-up, in preparation for that October 30th meeting, are you required to present motions that were passed on the plans in order for the state to continue moving forward?
That's correct. So I need the Board of Edu, I'm, I'm here with you tonight because I need you to approve the proposed approach. And then we would have the superintendent of schools signature on the application and proof that you've, you've, you approved the plan.
Thank you. So with that, I'll ask for the first recommended motion. Of course, we can have further discussion if there is any to be had. Mr. Vasella? Mr. Vassella?
Move the Newington Board of Education to approve the final plans for the Board of Education offices and the Helen Nelson Meeting Room as presented by QA and M Architecture.
And a second by Mr. Branda. Is there discussion on the motion? Mrs. Maraca?
I would ask that Mr. Jacobowitz attended a building committee meeting late today. And there is just one update that I'd like him to share with you this evening. Or Tom?
Yeah, actually, I can identify that for you. So, as a part of the cost estimating process, the total project has identified eight ad alternates that will be, have been isolated for the purpose of determining what their cost is. Those ad alternates include the basement of the building, basement of the whole building, the expansion of the gymnasium by an extra 1,000 square feet, some gymnasium equipment, ooh, oh, emergency generator. And there were three other items. I don't have the, the list in front of me. So, just for your information, the basement and the associated storage is a part of the Board of Ed program. And we're presenting that to PCR on October 30th. It's the intention that that is a part of the project. But, it has been isolated as an alternate so that we can identify what the cost of that particular component is. That will help us manage the bid at the end of the day.
Can we have, before we go to the four hands that I see from? I'm counting Mr. Brandis a hand. But, can we get some interpretation as to what that means for board applications, saying that these are our, part of our plans and the future?
So, it is a part of the plan, and it will be submitted as such. And the intention is entirely to build it as such. If we were not to build it as such, then what would happen is the reimbursement would be affected negatively. So, if let's, based on the current alternate, the, the value of the basement is $600,000 approximately, of which $300,000 is attributed to the storage for the Board of Education. The reimbursement associated with that work would not come to the community. So, the community would miss out on that reimbursement if they didn't go forward with the work. But, there's no obstacle to us taking the project to PCR the way it is, because it is the intention of the committee and the community to build the basement space.
And, and then, in the event that the space was decided by the building committee not to be built, would that require the board to have off-site storage?
Well, that's a great question, yes. Because you'd have to, you'd have to address that storage program someplace else, whether there was another space that became available in the building. Or, if not, it would obviously physically would have to be dealt with someplace else. However, I think the Board of Education would have something to say about whether or not that alternate was selected, because A, it's a part of your program. And I understand there's a memo of understanding between the Board of Education and the town. So, my understanding is that is, there are two alternates of highest priority. One is expansion of the gymnasium, and one is the basement. So, those would be the alternates that would be considered the first mandatory option.
And, and just because I haven't been through it, none of us have been through anything like this before, but how does the Board of Ed get a say if the alternate was not being selected? Because my, just, just seems like everyone who's involved continuously says it's the building committee who decides everything. And I'm, do, do we get a, I mean, I know we have kind of a representative on the committee, but.
In fairness, that's a little bit above my pay grade. I, I don't mean to ma, make light of it. I, I appreciate your concern about it. But, we are bidding all of the work, and it's the intention to put it all on the project.
Okay. We're gonna go to Emily with two hands before Mrs. Droes with one.
I just, I would like some help understanding if it's the intention of the committee to build it, and it's to the community's benefit, and it's a need. Why is that an alternate space?
Well, like the other elements, which essentially the project needs, we're trying to find ways to get, to rectify the budget and get to a point where the building committee would feel comfortable going out to bid. So, in, I guess, in simple terms, there, the construction manager has presented an estimate for the project overall. We, the project as of right now is a little bit over budget. But, the, the building committee wanted to have a means to, to identify or to limit the overage to a point where it, it's equivalent with all of our contingencies, so that they felt comfortable at least taking it out to the bidders. The building committee feels that the budget estimates are conservative, and they feel that we're gonna realize value at the time of bid. But, in order to get out to bid, the building committee wanted to feel comfortable that they had a mechanism to get closer to their bid number. So, they established a number of alternates, which included numerous things that other tenants want in the project as well.
At a minimum, I'm glad the rumors we had heard before about the Transition Academy being one of those potential ad alternates is not one of them. So, that's at least a positive sign, because records, record storage is, is far less important than the Transition Academy.
At one point, actually, the Transition Academy was being considered as an ad alternate, as well as numerous other suites. And in fairness, those aren't things that can be an alternate. But, it's, again, a mechanism to identify a certain amount of cost that offsets the project. For instance, town clerk fit-out was an ad alter, the fit-out of the space was an alternate. It, it's a mechanism that the building committee said, yeah, this is kind of silly, and we really can't present that to the public. But, it's not uncommon for a project of this nature to have items like an emergency generator or basement be ad alternates. There are other things, oh, the roof screen. They're gonna kill me with that. I would like to screen all the mechanical equipment on the roof. That's an ad alternate in the tune of $150,000. Oh, kitchenettes, many of the departments in town hall have millwork with a sink and a refrigerator. Those are now ad alternates, except for one per floor and the Board of Ed kitchen. So, your kitchen actually is, your ki, offices kitchen are in, in the basement. But, it was a way to identify $300,000 worth of potential savings.
And Mr. Vassalla, I just wanna ask, I know you've been spending a lot of time talking to everyone on the committee, being at meetings. Is that, you know, can you shed a little light on the, the ad alternate situation with your microphone?
Basically, what Mr. Arcari has said is, the last meeting that I attended, where they went through the list of the ad alternates was basically that, that they're, they're trying to put money into reserves. And it does the dollar sign as the, I think, the main reason behind it all.
But, it's your feeling from your conversations with everyone that the basement has, is of, is of that priority?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Droes?
So, um, so it took me, like, through your entire presentation to figure out, like, where you played these roles. So, I appreciate you taking so much time to really learn every single thing that we need in order to run the school. So, I do appreciate, you seem like you really understand our, our town and our needs. So, I appreciate that. So, is there any chance that, as I'm listening to this, so, the storage, is that part of the money that you're getting from the Board of Ed grant? So, if we don't get the storage, we lose all the money? How does that work? That's my first question.
So, actually, no.
Just, just the money associated with?
Yeah. So, if the storage wa, if the basement storage wasn't included in the project, the state would say, hey, wait a minute, because they do an audit. You didn't build the basement. We're not gonna give you X amount of the total reimbursement.
Is there any chance that if we choose to pass this and agree to it, that there's going to be all of a sudden these new alt, add, whatever you just called them?
Ad alternates.
Ad alternates, like, so we say, yeah, we're gonna do this. And then, all of a sudden, you guys get together and you're $500,000 over budget. And you say, okay, well, we're also gonna add more things to that ad alternate list. Like, are we allow, are you allowed to, it's, you or the building committee, and I don't know how it works, and I apologize. I'm a teacher, I know everything there is to know about teaching math, that's about it. So, like, what, like, can you come back and say, we agreed to this? And then, you're like, you know what? Because that's kind of how this has been happening, not you personally. But, like, can you come back and say, you know, we're just kidding, we're not gonna pay for the Transition Academy? Like, is that, is that a possibility?
Well, I would say, in that example, no. The Transition Academy is a program requirement, absolutely has to be a part of the project. You know, in reality, you know, we want the basement. It makes a lot of sense. There's other departments in the building that want the basement. But, could the project happen without the basement physically? I suppose it, it could, but it's kind of integral. But, physically, it'd happen. The Transition Academy is an actual pro, physical program element that has to be there. So, it's a difficult comparison. But, the reality is, is no, I don't think there's gonna be something sprung upon you as, in regards to additional ad alternates. And I, and quite frankly, there's gonna be a lot of discussion about this. So, the way the process works is the sub-trade bids will go out to bid, and then, we're gonna get all the bids. And we're gonna find out where we are, and we're gonna know really quick where we are. And then, there's a, a negotiation process that happens between the town and the construction manager regarding what the guarantee maximum price is gonna be and what's included in that. The town is under strict mandate to maintain the $28.8 million budget. So, if we're over budget and we can't afford the alternates, the project's probably gonna come to a bit of a halt, and we're gonna have to re-decide what happens. Do we get more money? Well, I've been told that's not an option. Or, do we have to rebid the project? Or, do we have to redesign the project? So, there's gonna be an opportunity to, to see what the results are, and vet what those results are, and have some input on what those results are prior to the project going forward.
Have you been provided a program of all of the equipment that we're gonna need inside of the third floor and also our Transition Academy, so that you know all of the electrical outlets that are gonna be required? Because my experience has been, yeah, we'll get the sheet rock, we'll get the walls, we'll get the doors, and then, all of a sudden, I got a one, two, three electrical outlets. And I'm just wondering, have you?
Does anyone sitting at this table know Lou Jacobowitz? Is there anybody? I'm joking a little bit, but we had a four-hour meeting that was quite painful the other day about where every data jack has to go, where every copier. Quite frankly, he specified the size and configuration of the hole in the counter so that recyclables could be dropped down through the countertop. I'm, I'm poking a little fun at Lou, but trust me, it was a very detailed and thorough meeting.
That, that's all I needed to hear, because my experience has always been is that all of a sudden, you need to add in a 30-amp, 100-amp, whatever volt type outlet, and it wasn't ever identified. So, if we've had that discussion, you, you're aware of it, that that's, and it's going to be on the construction documents.
Well, I can add to that, yes, 99% will be. But, construction is a fluid process. I guarantee you, we didn't get it 100% right. There will be things that get adjusted during the construction phase of the project. And, you know, there may be an outlet or something that has to move at the end of the day.
I just, okay, thank you.
I, I was gonna ask something kind of parallel to that. So, these are called final plans in our, in our motion, but it's, it's your experience, I'm, I'm gathering, that there, there may be some things that change, but they wouldn't necessarily, there wouldn't be some kind of overhaul of the design. Is that accurate? Can we expect that, that what we're approving will be essentially what we get?
Yes, in, in structure. It's not uncommon for things to move. It might not be uncommon for someone to say, oh, we don't want this to be a storeroom anymore. We want this to be an office, and we wanna move storage there. As long as adjustments are relatively minor in nature, there's no financial impact, and it's not a problem.
So, these are design development drawings?
No, these are construction document drawings.
Construction documents, okay.
They're, yes, they're complete. We're putting the final, final coordination issues.
But, of course, when things actually go up, there could be, a, a space works better here instead of there, so a flip-flop or something like that is, is probably the, as much as it, we could expect it. So, we can, we can say fairly confidently, these are, this is what's going to be on the third floor?
That's correct.
Okay. Dr. Braverman, did you have something?
I was just gonna assure myself that this would be the second floor, and downstairs would be first, and upstairs would be third. Is that correct? Or not?
Yes, I think as of right now, it's first, second and third floor. The first floor has a Transition Academy and Helen Nelson Room. The second floor has the town's administrative offices. And the third floor houses the Board of Education offices. You guys have the penthouse.
Uh, Mr. Tufo?
You mentioned earlier a generator. Don't we have one out front?
You do have a generator. The police station has a generator, but the generator that this building will require is quite massive. And so, the generator that you currently have won't work for the new building. So, that, my understanding is Dave Langdon has his eyes on repur, repurposing it for the community.
That's question number one. Number two is, the add-ons would be covered by a change order?
The add-ons would be rolled into the contract between the town and the construction manager almost immediately. There are a few of the ad alternates that could be executed at a later date, like gym equipment. You can buy that at pretty much any time. But, the basement and the gym addition would be decided day one. There, there are structural components, they need to be incorporated immediately.
Mrs. Sam?
All right. So, if we vote to approve the Board of Ed offices in the Helen Nelson Room, we're also saying, we understand, though, voting up, voting for this, we may not still get our storage space, because that's one of the, the things that they wanna eliminate if, if needed.
I think Mr. Arcari would phrase it differently, but I understand what you mean. But, that, that we're approving this, there, there's, there's storage for us in the basement. It is at, as an ad alternate. It sounds like Mr. Arcari would say that that is something that is very likely to be part of the construction package anyway. They just wanna break it out to see cost before okaying it.
I just wanna be, I just want it to be clearer. But, it's, it's basically that. We are saying, we agree to that, but we understand that that space might be taken from us, and I want it to be clear that that's, that's what.
And when we say understand, we, we say that we, we would not like that.
Correct.
But, we acknowledge that that is something that could happen. Fair?
That is fair. But, interestingly enough, I would point out that currently in the construction manager's estimate, there's about a million dollars' worth of design and estimating contingency and escalation. That million dollars goes away instantly. It goes out of the design estimate the minute you budget, you bid the project, because you're, there's no longer any mis, you know, mysterious unknowns. So, that million dollars, in theory, could be allocated to ad alternates number one and two immediately, if, if the bid values are realized. If there isn't money to realize those first couple of ad alternates, we have a real problem anyways. And, you know, I'm going to be in the hot seat again. So.
Is there, I, I think that was a fairly complete discussion. Does anyone have any further questions before we vote on the first motion that's been made? Second, Mrs. Guy?
Not really a question. I just wanna say thank you for presenting and, and being candid.
I just want to say thank you for presenting and, and being candid with us. I appreciate that.
Uh, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? One. The motion passes eight to one. Uh, if someone can read the second recommended motion? Mrs. Stam?
Move the Newington Board of Education approve the final plans for the Transition Academy as presented by QA and M Architecture.
And a second by Dr. Braverman. Is there any further discussion on the Transition Academy plans that were presented to us? Um, it's a very similar space to the one we have now. It's my guess that most of the same furniture that we have in there will go from where it is now to the modular, um, and then potentially based on the length of time we've had it move into the new space. Is that correct?
It may. It will just depend on what happens with transitioning, um, furniture in and out and using it in the modular over the next two years. Uh, Mr. Jackmowitz and I are looking at FFNE, uh, through either our non-lapsing account or other ways that we would have money to be able to buy furniture fixtures and other equipment.
Right, if there's not money available through the referendum, which there may be at the end of the day. But we have already set aside some money, uh, at the end of last year to do that. Good reminder. Uh, Mrs. Guyen?
We spent a lot of time discussing, um, how in, currently, we've been able to use the hallway space for some of the activities for our students. And I just want to make sure that that space has been addressed. I think that it has, but I just wanted to make sure, the need for that extra space.
Are you, are you speaking at the Temporary Transition Academy? Or are you talking-
No.
I think she's talking about the, at the new-
In, in this design here.
Oh, yes. Yes, they're, they're fine.
Okay.
And, and it looks like one of those access points out is to that long corridor on the plan. So that's what they would use? I was actually looking the other way. Yeah. Any further questions on the Transition Academy plans? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Arkery, thank you very much for your time this evening. Appreciate it. And if there's anything further that you need from us, of course, we're very approachable.
No, thank you very much. I'd just like to say I'm, I'm grateful for the work we've had with Lou and Pamela. Um, communications have improved dramatically between the project and the community, ourselves and the Board of Education. And I attribute that to their efforts, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I did recognize during our discussion, but, but Paul, thank you for all your time. And, you know, it's, it's important to have that back and forth. So I appreciate you being on another committee. Um, we'll move on to a discussion action item on the Health Benefit Fund. I'll have someone read the motion, uh, first, and we can discuss after. Mrs. Guyen?
Move the Board of Education direct the Superintendent of Schools to inform the town that the health benefit credit in the amount of $405,608 will be utilized to reduce required contributions for health benefits for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. No action regarding the reallocation of funds from the Employee Benefits Account 2950 is authorized at this time.
In a second, by Mr. Vassella. Um, so, uh, Mr. Brandon, Mrs. Stroes, this is your, this is kind of the conclusion of how the health benefits arrangement works. Um, this is one of, this is the second step, I guess. So the first step we took in March 2018. Um, we got a preliminary number for what the credit from the 1718 school year would potentially be. And we could reduce, um, what we were paying at that time, as we do every year. Um, we say, we'll wait until October, when the plan year has ended, that June 30th, and we get a final credit amount of how much is coming back to us because our claims were lower than the amount that we had, uh, been required to budget for. We've now received that number as $405,608. Um, what tonight's motion is, uh, doing is saying that it will be utilized to reduce our current year contributions. Um, effectively, that means that at the end of the year, or whenever we would choose to, there's $405,608 of money that can be spent in our budget that doesn't need to be spent in this current year budget on health benefits. Some, in, in some of my earlier years, we immediately allocated that money towards specific items. Um, more recently, we've waited towards the end of the year to see, um, what's come up, whether it be maintenance issues, um, technology-related, special ed expenditures, um, buses, which, um, we just talked about tonight and, and certainly, um, need to keep replenishing our fleet every year. Um, what we typically try to do, um, is use that money for one-time purchases, uh, so it doesn't impact budgets moving forward. Um, so that's stage three, which is not happening this evening, would happen sometime later in the year. Towards the end of the year, we now have the additional flexibility of moving that money into non-lapsing fund if we wanted to, um, to save for a larger project or, um, to do anything we wanted. Um, Mr. Jackmowitz, is there anything you'd want to add, um, in terms of the process, what it all means?
Uh, stated perfectly. Uh, the forecast in March, when we had discussion, was that, uh, I couldn't see the trend lines holding up and generating a gigantic credit. You know, we ended up having $80,000 or so more than what was originally estimated. That was primarily attributable to the, uh, drug rebate arrangement that's integrated in this. And we don't have access to that formula and how all those dollars are driven, uh, or derived out of their formula. So the actual claims, uh, and the benefit from the trend line was very close to what we had forecasted in, uh, back in March. As part of the supplemental reasoning for deferring any decisions, some of it has to deal with potential FFNE purchases. You know, in the design, we ended up integrating, you know, s- several large, uh, uh, dense pack storage systems, which are expensive, uh, you know, things to create, and they're custom fit for the areas. Uh, coupling that with the furniture that'll have to be sized to the much smaller quarters we're going to have, I wouldn't be surprised if the ultimate FFNE needs are, you know, $300,000 to $500,000 for the project. And certainly, just seeing how everything kind of plays out over the next, uh, you know, few months with bidding on the project, where are we actually going to land? And what other academic needs? We need to balance everything against. Most prudent decision is to just kind of sit tight for right now. Uh, you know, relook at it a few months down the road.
Is it, uh, just remind us, what, right now, at the end of last year, we set aside, is it $150,000 for FFNE?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And so that's just safely in our non-lapsing account, um, uh, to be utilized for purposes that we, we see fit?
Correct. And really, we, it's, in all likelihood, will need to be a decision where we have to have that money available at the end of this year. Right now, I can't promise we're going to generate another credit for next year. So by, at the timing of when we would anticipate buying these items, will be sometime during next fiscal year. And if we don't yield the credit this year from our operations that'll roll into next year, we have to set the money aside this year to get there. So it's just, you know, advanced planning.
Any questions or comments on, uh, the motion this evening? Dr. Braverman?
We used to have an amount of $800,000 in the Health Benefit Fund when we weren't using-
It's been much larger in, in other years. We, we had over a million dollars one year.
So is this because of the high deductible plan? Or is it going to always trend lower now, half of what we used to get?
I really am not sure of that. I, part of it is the agent of record takes a price and a cost for the whole plant. The initial transition to the, uh, high deductible plan yielded an immediate benefit. And you saw that in the million dollar one the year before. It has leveled off to a certain degree, but it's leveled off much lower. So, you know, we have been very successful with the cost containment activities for the benefit of the community. Uh, it's just, I think we're to the point where it might be unrealistic to think we're going to generate more than the $200,000 to $400,000 range for the foreseeable future unless we have major changes, again, in medical coverage.
And, and the other point alongside that is that the agent of records number for at least the last two years that I remember very clearly has been, um, a ve, we were negative-
Yeah, negative in the zero.
Last, uh, two years ago, and a zero this current budget year, um, in terms of what increase they were putting. So in previous years, we had a larger increase in the amount we had to set aside in our budget, followed by good returns, in part because of our change in plan, which went into a huge, um, a huge credit. So now that we're getting a 0% increase year over year in what we have to set aside, um, and we're, we're fully into the high deductible plans, um, with all of our staff, um, I th, you know, that's, that's why Lou's giving us the confidence that it's going to be a lower amount, probably more regularly. Mr. Sylvia?
Uh, during our insurance meeting with the agent, he basically said that he did not anticipate that this future coming year will have any significant increases, uh, and that it'll probably be equal to last year's.
Fantastic.
So that, um, he's seeing a little bit more stabilization on the, um, projected expenditures that we would probably incur. Uh, one other item, though, is, so we don't have any immediate targets that we need to use this money for at this moment, right?
N- no.
Okay. So, yeah, I would be very much in favor of just putting it in the non-lapsing fund for when it's, when we do have a need.
Well, and so until that point, if, if and when the pressing needs come up before the end of the fiscal year, that money will be available to address it. We'll get updates on, on how it, otherwise, it could very well just be put aside. Or, you know, who knows what's going to happen over the next year? Mrs. Guyen?
I love the idea of saving money for something that we're going to need in the future. My concern is only that we have put off a lot of maintenance items, and I, that makes me uncomfortable.
That's a good point. We're still waiting for the, the grant money to return from the state. Um, I know there was some, some action taken by the council to authorize the town manager to enter into the agreement to get the money, but we certainly don't have it yet. But that will hopefully address some of those needs. Many more that we haven't addressed, though. Any other, uh, questions, comments before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we will move on to five, uh, additional items on proposed, uh, policies. All of these policies, um, are required that the board looks at them twice. So tonight is the discussion. Uh, our next full board meeting is, uh, in November, and that, these will all be action items on there. Um, so, and we'll say it in November, too. But if it looks like we're just passing a bunch of motions without talking about them, it's because we're having that discussion, uh, tonight. And this discussion has already occurred, uh, with Student Policy Committee, uh, with Dr. Braverman and her crew. And so I will turn over the first one, which is a discussion item on the proposed revision policy for harassment prevention, and I will look to Mr. Freese.
Thank you for that introduction. Um, what I would like to do this evening is be able to share with you some of the key highlights and features of the proposed revisions to this policy on harassment. Um, and that you can take the time between now and our next board meeting to really look it over and then come back with any questions that you may have then, uh, or any that I would be able to answer this evening. This is a, a current policy that we have that is, um, revised. Um, it previously was, uh, titled Sexual Harassment and focused primarily around sexual harassment. We know that harassment can be in many varied forms, uh, beyond that of sexual nature. Uh, so the purpose of the revisions to this policy, uh, is to include those other variations of harassment as well as a process in how to manage it, both proactively and if it were to happen. And, uh, a form in which folks could file, uh, revisions to a form in the event that a harassment did occur. Uh, and a process in which, and to whom they could go to if they needed to. Um, so that is the, the primary, uh, shift here. And then it further goes to define what harassment is. Um, and not just harassment itself, but then that of sexual nature, bullying. Even though we do have a separate bullying policy, this is more aligned to adult harassment. Adult harassment to adults, adult harassment to students, adult harassments to other, uh, community members that manage our buildings. And reporting and complaint procedure. So that's what's outlined in this document.
But is there a need to differentiate between, uh? So, thank you. Is there a need to differentiate between, um, minors, adults, and such? I mean, is that because of law? Or is that just because we want to differentiate?
So we, we do have policy that, um, sometimes overlaps to a degree. We have policy for students and the expectations around students. That's a different, uh, level policy than what's presented tonight. In this policy, we are presenting our policy around personnel. Uh, so this is a personnel policy. Um, so it kind of is very explicit to that. Um, you're, you're accurate in saying that there are many similarities to, to both. Um, however, how we may deal with that with, with minors and, and with young children or even high school children would be different than how we would manage it, uh, with an adult as an employee. There would be variances there. So we would want to tease and parcel that out, so that way it's very clear. And that's what this helps to do.
I appreciate it.
Are, are anonymous complaints allowed via the policy? Or is that the practice of, of the, the district?
Th- they are allowed. Um, you are allowed to, to make one, uh, but the district does, uh, put into place, uh, a kind of disclaimer that we may not be able to act fully on it because we can't get the information we need to investigate it in full. So we may not be able to manage it the best that we possibly could. But we do understand, uh, folks' desire to be anonymous at times. Um, but we would hope that, um, we would be able to work together in a confidential manner, uh, so that way we could appropriately resolve the issue. Sometimes there are missing facts when someone is too anonymous, if that makes sense.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions on this policy? Or did you have anything else on this?
Those would be the primary highlights. Um, and, and as you go through it, don't hesitate to ask any questions between now and the next board meeting or wait for that meeting, whatever you're comfortable with.
Any questions on this policy before we move on from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, a discussion on the proposed revision policy to the equal opportunity nondiscrimination policy.
And I would like to just draw your attention, in your white folder, there is a revision to F5. So if you have not yet gone into your white folder, if you could replace the, the version that is in your white folder with the one that was in your packet, um, that would be the revision to it. Uh, and it was a great suggestion by our Student Policy Committee members. Uh, the term sex was in there, and it, um, I believe should have been gender. And we revised it, uh, as of our meeting last. So, uh, this is a proposal that speaks to equal opportunity nondiscrimination. And some of the key highlights and changes here for this revised policy is that we really broadened the scope of the policy, uh, to separate equal opportunity and nondiscrimination from what used to be, in totality, nondiscrimination of students with, or individuals with disabilities. So it was fully focused on nondiscrimination of students solely with disabilities, where we realized that we need to be nondiscriminatory against more folks than just people with disabilities. Uh, so this broadens that scope, and it also applies equal opportunity as well. Uh, this is very common for districts to have a policy like this, recommended by CAPE, recommended by, uh, the State Department of Education, um, where, where all, what we had previously was just a little bit outdated, and, and we needed to really further our, and broaden our scope. So this policy defines equal employment opportunity. It defines discrimination and the necessary steps to ensure all employees know how to manage such instances if they were to occur.
And, Mr. Freese, is it, is it accurate that although the federal government doesn't recognize, um, all, all of these different type of groups for nondiscrimination, we do have state statutes that require nondiscrimination from public entities for the, for these groups?
That's exactly correct. And these are the groups that are represented in our state statutes, and that's where we adopted this from.
Mr. Sylvia?
We didn't add anything to, this is basically the same definition that the state uses?
Correct.
Okay. We didn't add anything?
Um, I, uh, I believe in our conversation, we're referring to the protected classes or the folks that, uh, could be discriminated against. The state defines very specifically, uh, tho, those groups of individuals. And so we used those same categories in our policy.
There's, and the reason for my question and the discussion is, um, there's, one of the partners at my firm does purely employment discrimination work. Um, and the federal government has very few, um, regulations and laws around what groups can or cannot be discriminated against. Um, it's really just race and sex.
Right.
Um, but the state, the state has a far, a much larger list of definitions that we can't discriminate against. It's good to see that they're in our, formalized in our policy.
So why aren't we referencing the state? Why are we-
We are. We are.
It's below in the legal references section.
I didn't see the reference. Oh, legal references, thank you. I got it. All right. Never mind.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Braverman?
So do we look at when we hire someone that if it's a male or female, it's a same, they have the same education? We hire- they have the same education, we hire them at the same rank and salary?
Absolutely.
That would be part of this, yes?
That would absolutely be part of this.
Okay. Good.
And we do post all of our nondiscrimination clauses on every site that we post on. We are part of national publications. Newington Public Schools in the National Nondiscrimination booklet. That goes out to, to national organizations to support equal rights and opportunities.
Any other questions on this revision of the policy? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, a discussion on our policy regarding individuals with disabilities.
So this policy also has been updated to reference some legal mandates that have come forward, as well as some older mandates that have been in place that, to be quite honest, during a policy audit, we recognized that we needed to kind of bolster this and really refresh it from where it was. We have many policies, so we are constantly auditing chunks of them at a time, and we got to this. And we recognized that there were items that were left out even from its infancy when maybe there could have been components of it embedded in there. So we even go back to section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and found that there is some information we, we could have added there. And what I would like to share with you that, and, and provide confidence to you with is that we absolutely were adhering to all laws and we were practicing all laws accordingly. Our policy didn't necessarily reflect our practices, so now we've kind of created a policy and revised a policy to do so. So it further defines an individual with disabilities in accordance with the law, and it includes and further defines what job accommodations we would have to make, accommodations for leave, application requests for accommodations, employee requests for accommodations, confidentiality, and complaints and non-retaliation. So we really defined specifically in this new policy those items which we had not done in previous policy.
Any questions on this policy? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, a discussion on the changes to the Family Medical Leave Act policy.
So this is a great policy, one that we, we use every day in our office, it seems. So, and, and one that again continuously needs to be reevaluated, relooked at, and not only for new language that may change at the federal and state level, but also just to ensure that what we're practicing matches policy and what policy reads is what we practice. So these revisions to the policy further define FMLA in accordance with recent legislative changes, including eligibility, who is eligible, the length of the leave, the internal leave, paid leave, employee notification responsibilities, scheduling planned medical leave, and outside employment while on leave. So those are some of the things that we decided that would be important for us to further define and highlight, so that way when folks are reading our policy, who may be questioning if they are eligible for FMLA or some of the parameters around it, they can garner very clear and more specific information to help support their decision, but also their responsibilities and what they need to do in collaboration with their employer, us.
Mrs. Guyan?
My question is around the, if both spouses are employees of the school district and request leave for the birth or placement of a healthy child by adoption or for foster care, that, that their time is combined, counted combined instead of separately? Why do we treat them differently?
That, that is how the law operates and that's, that's legislatively mandated to us. That's not a decision that we have created as the Newington Public Schools. That is a legislative decision that we need to adhere to.
Hmm.
Our ability to parcel or tease out that they're separate entities is, is not our decision.
Okay.
Well, we, we tend to follow the legislative statutes as closely as possible. We tend to not go against them and change the practice that they put into place.
Dr. Braverman?
Mr. Freese, is this in the teacher's contract as well?
We do not put our policy directly into the contract. It is a federal mandate law, so we practice this. We make reference to FMLA leave in the contract and that teachers have the right to it, but other employees have the right to it as well. Our tutorial staff, any, any, you know, employee that works 1,250 hours or more or 950 if they're tutorial-type staff is eligible for it, as well as our AFSMI employees and many other subgroups. So it isn't a direct contract language-specific policy that's in there specifically the way it's written here, but we do reference it quite often and we have a whole resource section on our website that has all of the policy and resource materials folks will need, even calculators on how to manage if they're going to be out and whether they're going to get paid or not.
Good. Thank you.
I just noticed on, on, these aren't numbered. On, two, well, in that paragraph we're just talking about, about both spouses, later in the, in the paragraph, it then says a husband and wife. I just thought maybe it would be appropriate to put spouse in there rather than, it does say spouse all the way through.
Can you please remind me what section number you're on?
Section four.
Section four, the last full paragraph on that page. So it's the third paragraph in section four. And it starts with if both spouses are employed, employees of the school district, but then the last sentence says however, a husband and wife may each take up to 12 weeks, but...
I'll gain further clarity on that and report back.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Correct.
We should certainly state it as neutral as possible.
I agree.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Mrs. Stam?
Yeah, I just, on section fourteen, not the instruction, the instructional employee. The outside, so my question is, so if someone is the, they're a teacher, is this?
Outside employment and vacation while on leave?
Are we just, I'm sorry, you're saying, okay, I went, I jumped ahead, I jumped ahead. Never mind, I jumped ahead.
You sure? Wait, that's in the same?
It's in the FMLA.
It's section fourteen of the document.
Yeah, it is. It's in here. It's in fourteen.
It makes reference to, yes.
Yes. So my, so my question is, do we have the right to tell somebody, if, okay, if I'm only, I'm a teacher, I'm on leave, but I have my own, you know, I work from home and whatever, you, we have the right to tell them they can't do that if they're on family leave?
It's in this one.
If they're on leave for medical purposes and they're still employed with us, we have the right to have a collaborative conversation around it and, and it could be determined that it would not be appropriate. So they may either have to, you know, remove themselves from employment with us if, if that's what's more important to them, or they might have to stay on leave. It would all depend on the nature of it.
But I guess my question is, like, can we actually tell people what they can do? Like, we?
It, it, it does depend, and the employer does have rights while on, on leave because you are out on leave from this employment agency.
Okay.
And we're providing the leave, so, so we do have rights.
Okay.
Yes.
I, like, I, I guess, like, you can't work for someone else, like, you know, you can't work, you can't work, but, you know, I just, that was, that's an interesting spot for me, that's all.
And it is?
It does not mean that you cannot work. It just means that we have to understand the nature and the, of the other work if it's during the time that you're out on leave, unable to work for us.
Okay.
Mr. Tufel, did you have something?
Well, he, got a question, reference, what are you talking about?
I got a separate question. But, to Ms. Stam's thing, what came across mine, so you're, you're telling me I'm on leave, but I can't bake cookies?
I, I am absolutely not telling you you cannot bake cookies, and if you're baking cookies, I would love a few. What I am saying is that we would have to have a collaborative conversation to understand the nature of that. If you are unable to teach in the classroom because you, you can't, let's say, stand, there, there, you had a foot surgery and you can't be in the classroom for some reason, and your baking cookies requires you to, to perform similar job functions and stand and do all that, that would really be a conflict of interest. That's probably not a great example, but it's where there is a conflict of interest for your reason why you're out, yet you're still applying that same ability in another forum to, to earn money during the same time you're, you're out and possibly earn money. That could be problem, it could be problematic.
All right. So now we're going to get a little more specific. I'm a culinary STEM-certified individual helping our students learn culinary skills on family medical leave, and I decide to cater Mr. Branda's 25th wedding anniversary.
Wow, that's quite, quite a few years from now.
Tenth? Tenth? All right. Now I'm, now I'm in conflict with?
But, Mr. Sylvia, it's, it's much more complicated than that because it's not just, you could say you're a culinary teacher, so you're not allowed to cook food anymore if you're not teaching, but you may not, you may be on FMLA for some kind of serious mental illness that, that, you know, you, you weren't able to be in a classroom at that time, you couldn't actually perform the function of your job because of whatever was going on. You could still be at home cooking food and that wouldn't necessarily conflict, but it's, it's much more complicated than just doing the actual task that you're doing in the classroom. Like, if you're taking leave as a math teacher, you can still complete math, you can still do, leave the tip in your head at a restaurant.
Right.
But you may, you may not be able to physically be in the classroom at that time.
So are we going to run around and police everybody that's on?
I don't think this is new, but...
No, it's, I think...
So it is.
That, that part is new?
It is new. That part is new, and there's a policy that will go along with it that we'll review next. It is new for the very purpose of, number one, we have never had anything like this, so we have never had any ability to lean back on something to be able to have those conversations when it does happen, because it does. And, and we've never had more policy around it to kind of define where we are and where we stand and how to manage it. So that's what it does provide. And there are other, I, I think back to, to Mr., you know, Showman's point, it, it is, it, it depends, many of the questions you're asking on, on the reason you're out, if, you know, if, what the medical leave is for, if it's workers' comp-specific, but then you're, you're working in a similar fashion for another industry, school district, tutoring, you know, it, it, there can be conflicts of interest, and we need to protect ourselves that folks aren't taking advantage of the two and running them parallel. Again, I would tell you that it does happen and we don't necessarily police it as much as it falls into our lap, the knowledge that is happening. And again, without a policy to lean back on and manage it, we really have no way to manage it.
Mrs. Stam?
I understand where you're coming from, but you just triggered something for me. Okay, so, and I'm going to put two scenarios together. Josh, give an example of someone has an emotional, you know, they're unable to manage a classroom, they can't do classroom management because they're in emotional distress, there's something going on with them. And then you said, well, then tutoring, but then I could see someone being able just to tutor a kid, you know, like, have his own business, I hope, you know, because there's many people who tutor outside of the school day. So, and, I think for me, the conflict is, I think I've, understand, like, you're, this came to, to fruition because something happened. I clearly get that. Something happened in this district that caused this to be a concern. One of my concerns is, we have really great employees in Newington. We have really great people who are, you know, for the most part, they're all, you know, dedicated people, and I don't see them doing this. I do see something like this in a policy for them to read and thinking, like, what do they think, I, I really think they'll take offense. And then, you know, in, you know, dishonesty related to that, that's a, you know, so how often did it happen? I don't know. I think that's where my concern is.
I'm going to go to Mrs. Droes.
I only have one hand up that time. Cindy, I, I, as the, you know, as the employee who would never do this, and, and I get that, but I also know as the employee who would never do this, and when I see someone take advantage of it, who is, it does frustrate me. So it is nice to know that the district has like a cover-your-backside policy because if it happens, I mean, if you're sitting there and you see, you know, that you're making money and, you know, you're getting paid by the district, and then you see someone doing something else, it can be very frustrating. So I think, and I don't know if it's written as beautifully as it makes people feel good about themselves, but I also think that as the employee who wouldn't do it, it's nice that they have some out to get someone who might be doing it to be back on track. Do you know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying, because yes, clearly that would be the same situation with me. It would frustrate me, but I just, maybe it is the way it's written, maybe there's some of the, you know, and I know we're getting to something else that, we can discuss it further too, so.
Mr. Tufel?
Yes. A husband is a teacher, wife goes out on maternity leaves, has a problem with an extended stay in the hospital. The baby goes home, the teacher has sibling, or children under school age, somebody's got to be with the kids and take care of the baby. How is he covered? Is he on, on a leave with pay or?
He absolutely is covered to take a leave. With or without pay would be a determination. Number one, we would look at the contract and see what's available, and number two would be through the superintendent as well. He's definitely eligible to take the leave under FMLA, absolutely. He doesn't happen to be the one with the disability. So the paid portion, we only apply sick time to the person with the temporary disability, the medical condition. So at that time, he would have to petition the superintendent for pay to use sick time. For, his wife would be getting it if she had sick time in the bank because she is the one temporarily disabled, but I think your question was specific to the male?
Well, no, I meant the, the wife.
Oh, the wife would be eligible to apply sick time to get paid while out on medical leave.
And then he would have to apply to his own business?
Oh, if he didn't work for us? Yes, he would have to apply through his own business. I'm sorry. Yes.
Mrs. Guyan?
I think this is going to open up a whole pan of worms, so I apologize. And I'm totally kidding. There, it appears as though there's two 14s.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I was having a...
So I was confused earlier by the, there's two 14s in a row.
So the instructional employee has 14 on it?
Yep. And the second, and the second 14 doesn't have a period after it either, so.
Thank you.
Plethora of editing issues here. Dr. Braverman?
Also causes a problem.
Was that, was that your full question, Mrs. Stam?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Braverman?
So Steve, we're, on number nine, where it says employee may be required to submit, don't, isn't it required, required to get medical documentation to go out on FMLA? That's what's in our contract and that's the way the form is it for the state. So maybe we need to say is required. Because there's a whole form that we fill out for FMLA.
Correct.
Sure.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. So that, that last conversation we had about the outside employment is a new policy in our next discussion item, number eight, regarding outside employment.
Well, maybe we should have led with this one before the FMLA.
Maybe.
Because I would have shared upfront that this policy really is meant as, in, in the way that I think Mrs. Droes shared, that we recognize that, goodness, 99.9% of our employees make great decisions and they do a wonderful job for us. And so it is never to question an employee, rather put something in place... And so it is never to question an employee, rather, put something in place for when the Board of Education or we need to take action against employees who may not make the best decisions. And not even really take action, but just have the ability to have that conversation when there's a conflict of interest between situations that could occur. You know, we talked about many examples, I think it would be very difficult to give an exhaustive list of them. I think, like we kind of shared, it's all going to be dependent upon the situation, but this gives us the ability to have a conversation around situations in which it may occur, and an ability to manage it appropriately if it is a conflict of interest.
This is a very interesting policy. Do, and I'm just, I'm going to start the questioning, so I guess I can do that. Sorry for both of you. Write it down so you don't forget. This, is this a Cabe recommended policy?
It, it is one that Cabe has policy around, it's one that many districts have policy around.
Okay. Mrs. Dros?
I have no idea if I'm allowed to ask this, because I'm part of it, not this one, but others. Is this a, could this be construed as a union, like, would the union come back with this particular policy? I don't know, like, I'm just-
Because it does seem like a condition of employment.
It does. So I just, so I have no idea if I'm allowed to, like, because, you know, I'm part of the CEA, but I-
Is this a condition of employment?
It's a condition of engaging in outside employment while employed with us. So it's a condition of being able to determine, so here, here are some examples. And, and I'll take, this hasn't happened, so I'm going to use a non-example here, to be clear, because we are celebrating our bus drivers tonight, so that's a, a great, a great opportunity. We have bus drivers who, who work for us, and maybe, and, and so let's say a driver, were out on medical leave for us, has been deemed ineligible to operate a motor vehicle for the Newington Public Schools, yet is operating a motor vehicle with a different company. At this time, we have nothing in place to be able to manage such a situation that is a conflict of interest.
Why is that a conflict?
And, and, well, because it could further put us at li, in a liability position, because if they're out on, let's say, workers' comp, and they further injure themselves at their other employment, we are paying for that. And it could mean further time that they're away from work here based on their employment somewhere else.
But this is a-
That's a big concern for us.
This is a lot broader than, than that, though. I mean, if you have a teacher who is a, a friend of mine is a teacher in another district and is, is, is like a fitness instructor in her off hours, she would need to tell her supervisor or principal that she was doing that and the hours that she was working in, and that just seems overly intrusive.
Okay. And we can look to, to shift some of this if that's of interest to the board.
Yes, Mrs. Dros?
I, I can't agree with you more about the FMLA thing, like, that was a perfect example. This one, like, I'm looking at the employment, does not create conflict of interest, I get that, but like, I'm reading it as it, it could open that can of worms of, you know, I sell Tupperware, and Tupperware has birthday week in May.
Has what?
Has birthday week in May. You make a lot of money if you do lots of different shows. So I call out sick, or I take a personal day from Newington, so I can sell. Like, I see that as being a conflict of interest, because now Newington's paying me, but if I wanted to take that day off without pay, because I make more money, I, I don't know, I just, if, but then I also look at, like, if I hurt myself, I'm this fitness instructor, which I clearly am not, but what if I hurt myself? So now I can't work. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm torn with this one, I just, this is a little bit Big Brother-ish, and I think the union might have a problem with it.
I, you know, I personally see, as I'm, as I'm looking through, and I didn't have the chance before the meeting to read word for word, but as I'm looking through, it seems like there are parts of it that are very different than other parts. There's a, there's a conflict of interest provision, which seems incredibly appropriate if you're doing work that creates some kind of conflict with the work you're doing for us. Workers' comp-related issues seems entirely appropriate, a way to resolve any conflicts that come up. If there's outside employment that's actually affecting work in the classroom, you know, for example, a teacher who was working in, in a third shift at a factory, coming into, coming into school the next day, not being able to stay awake as a result of that, you know, at my mom's school, there was an issue, there was an issue before with an employee who's working a third shift at another job, coming in and just not performing well, or calling out sick as a result of, of working until 7:00 AM that morning. That certainly seems like something we would want to be able to address. It's the, the other situations about, just, just the, the, the conditions of anyone who has outside employment must notify, and what happens if they don't notify? What if someone is picking up a waitressing job on the weekend, or a waitering job, or a bartending job or something? They have to then report it to their supervisor, but I could see a lot of issues there, because what if they don't want anyone else to know that they're doing other work because they're, you know, for, for whatever reason, or don't want people to bother them at their second work? I, yeah, Mrs. Stam?
I think it's, I think it's personally invasive, I don't, and, and like, I, you know, after discussing the, the FMLA leave and that whole condition, I get why you want that, but this, there are employees when they're here working, but for us to say, you can't take an outside job until you tell me, I, I don't feel comfortable with that. And, you know, or they have their own, you know, company, you know, they might not want people to, and whatever it is. So I, you know, before I even, I caught this when we were, I, you know, we skinned this before we came, and I didn't, then I saw this here. I read this a lot today. I, I had a lot of questions about this. Y'all help me out with this, so I didn't have to go there. I'm very uncomfortable with this policy. I can, I could, I could come on the, the right, the side of this one, but I'm having a lot of difficulty with this one.
Mr. Brandon?
So I wasn't at the policy meeting, because I forgot I was on the policy committee. So I, I did call Stephen, and, and he helped me kind of go through it, because I had some of the same concerns as you. And I guess for me, kind of piggybacking off of what Josh said, and as I think about our conversation, it seems to me that the policy is more to protect against when workman's comp and FMLA is going to, go into place. So I just wonder if there's a way to make it more around, specific to just that, which, what you have in the FMLA policy, because I just feel like, to Josh's point, like, maybe they don't want somebody to know that they are, you know, waitressing, or waitering, or bartending, whatever. So I just, I wonder if this one is a little bit too much, and the FMLA covers what you're trying to protect the district from. So that, that's just my general thought.
Right. And to me, there's really, there's like two or three bullets in that, in that paragraph about conditions for engaging that, you know, you get rid of a couple of those, like, like the notification, it's really, it's the two notification ones, the first and the fourth bullet point. I mean, those, those apply universally to people who meet the real conditions of, of what we want to see, of people who are not being affected at work, not creating conflict, not, you know, harming the district in any way, just looking to pick up a couple extra dollars, which, you know, the burden on, on that, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it. I haven't heard a, a great justification for having that specific portion of it, the rest of it makes sense to me. Mrs. Guyan? I was definitely going to agree with everything I just said.
Yeah, I think that essentially I do agree. I think that, I understand the FMLA part and, and the legal pieces there, and then I am just wondering if it's looking to protect us, or give you some legs to stand on if somebody has another job that they're working, that does happen to impact, it does end up impacting here. I've been at jobs before where they've said you, you can't have another job that interferes with this job, this is your main job, and as part of being a professional, we expect you to perform this job well. So I understand wanting to, having a place to go to if it's impacting, so I would agree with that much of it, but not the, all of this.
Mrs. Dros?
I think we're, again, I agree with the FMLA thing. I just think to say that it's a job that's, another job is interfering, it's no different than, I have other roles. There's nights that we're here until 3 o'clock, 2 o'clock, how many hours did you take me off of my bedtime? And I went to work the next day with bags under my eyes, and I know I wasn't my best self. I definitely wasn't the best human being I could be at that moment, but I made it, like, this is not a job, it's-
Mostly you're not getting paid.
But, no, but do you know what I'm saying? So why is it saying that-
And this is actually beneficial to your work as, as an instructor in the classroom anyway, so it's probably part of your job to be here right now.
Absolutely, but I'm not saying that, I'm saying, like, so who's to say where you draw the line? So you can't do anything that's going to, or my kids are sick, and so I was up late with them.
If this was something that, on a, on a weekly basis, you were having a bad day, I, I would say right now, obviously, we would know, I mean, you, whoever the supervisor is, would know that there's something going on that's affecting, whether it's a personal issue, or there's some kind of other employment that's impacting, but if you're going into work twice a week, not performing your job-
But that has nothing to do with what I'm doing at home, it could be, I'm staying up late because I've been watching Grey's Anatomy. Do you know what I mean? So at that point, we address the issue that you're not doing your job because you're not doing your job. I don't think it's necessarily because you have alternative employment.
Could be. Mr. Freezy, you want to jump? One more try? Someone turn off their mic? Try it again.
Thank you. So the feedback has been invaluable, I thank you so much for it. I guess I would ask for some clarification to move forward. Would it be that the board would appreciate a revised version of this policy with some of the recommendations for change that I've heard this evening? Or would it be that I would not provide this policy at all?
I, I think revisions would be, heads are nodding, I think revisions would be appropriate with some, some additional explanation from you about what it, what it, if you're taking away certain parts of it, how does that impact the overall policy? Are there parts that can be severed without ruining the entire policy? Because obviously, we're kind of all just talking right now, and, and you've thought that things through, so I think we'd appreciate another discussion about what it could look like if it was changing to address some of the concerns you've heard tonight, how imperative some of the language is. If there's other justification that we haven't discussed, I think that'd be helpful. And there's, there's certainly no, it doesn't have to be approved November 14th for any reason, right?
Correct, no.
Mrs. Stam, did you have something? I'm s, I'm sorry, I've been ignoring Dr. Rebermann for a while.
Oh, that's okay. So for FMLA, it's usually, if it's granted, your doctor, you had something serious more than a week, usually, that you're out, be, maybe beyond your sick days for FMLA. So it's not just that you were tired or working, it's a significant thing that needs to be signed by your physician and then brought back to you or HR or whatever. So it's not quite serendipitous.
Right, and that's on the, on the previous policy, and, and certainly, but, but does address that if you're out on FMLA, you shouldn't be, you're not allowed to be engaging in other employment.
Correct.
If you're not allowed, if you can't do what you're-
You can't do your job.
What you're not able to do here. But the next policy, the, the 4154 policy is, is the, the next one in the packet is, 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 there's provisions in there about anyone with a second job needing to report it to their supervisor, and then conditions around that.
Okay.
Mrs. Stam, back to you.
So I guess what, like, for me, the, you know, the, which policy is, I'm sorry, the, the medical leave policy in the, in, you know, statement 14, which is probably 15, I, in my opinion, covers this, but I know what you're trying to say. So that's, you know, so maybe when you come back, if you, you want to make revisions, I think that we all just said we would, maybe we can just hash that out, like, what really is the difference, you know what I mean? Because here, I feel like you, you made this specific, like, because that issue happened, and I feel like it's stated in here, like, that we can address it with this one. And I'm not sure why we need this as well, but I do, I would like to see a revision in this, because I really don't like the idea that someone has to tell his, their supervisor if they're doing something else different, or another opportunity came up in their lives.
So I would agree, and I, I respect and appreciate again the feedback for a revision and the opportunity to bring that forward to you. I would be able to share now that the difference would be that the item that's in reference in the FMLA document is, is around FMLA, it's a reference to this policy in FMLA. And I guess that's why I said from the beginning that I maybe should have started with this policy. But, so we're just referencing it, and that is according to that, but there are other times and reasons that people might be out, where they could engage in other employment. It could be workers' compensation, for example. In our contract, there is a medical leave that's not FMLA, it could be for a child during leave. So there's many other reasons that people might be out from work, where there could be some type of conflict that we might want to consider. That's all.
Is there further comment discussion on this policy? This seems like this will be a further discussion item at our next meeting, and then potentially an action item at the, at the meeting following that one. Okay. We will move on to item nine on our agenda, an action item, agreement between the Board of Education of the Town of Newington and the Newington Association of School Administrators, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2022. If I can have someone read the motion first, Mr. Vasella?
Move to approve the agreement between the Board of Education of the Town of Newington and the Newington Association of School Administrators, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2022, as proposed.
And a second by Mrs. Guyan, we'll move into discussion. Just first say for procedure purposes, several months ago, there was a committee assigned to do negotiations with the newly formed Newington Association of School Administrators, otherwise known as NASA. Congratulations for that acronym, whoever thought of it.
It's been there for decades.
Been there for decades evidently, so decades back, that's just, that's a good one. The committee from the board was made up of Mrs. Guyan, Mrs. Stam, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Vasella, I believe Mrs. Anist, is that right? Okay, you looked at me wrong. I believe Mrs. Anis was the council rep that attended all those meetings, and was negotiated by, between the board and the administrators. The administrators have ratified, that their group has ratified it unanimously. The next steps would be, the Board of Ed would approve this motion. If approved, it would then advance to the town council, who would have 30 days to vote on, up or down on the contract as presented. If they don't take any action in 30 days, it just becomes a valid binding contract between us and the administrators. With that brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Guyan to, to go over some of the highlights and some of the, the most important parts of the agreement, knowing that this is still, until it's fully ratified, still part of our confidential negotiations. Mrs. Guyan?
Okay. Couple of things, just, I'm going to go over some of the highlights tonight, and just so the public understands, as part of the negotiation process, we had a negotiation and strategy meeting with the full board to discuss this in, in detail, so when we, I'm going to give highlights again tonight, and we're going to vote on it. And just so you know, this isn't all the information that we had, but at, again, at this point, it is confidential, so we can't share all of it yet. And it, once the town council adopts it, then it becomes a public document, and then it is public. A couple of bits of good news is, this is a, these are all employees that we already had, they were working under an addendum, and honestly, not a lot has changed from that, we've just sort of formalized things, so here's some of the, I'll call them highlights again. This, some good news is, in the last, currently our administrators, hold on, let me back up one second, we're going to start with insurance. Our administrators currently are, contribute, their premium contribution is at 11.25%, and in this next, in this contract, it moves up over the next four years up to 18.25%, which is actually great for, for the board and the town, they're taking- They're taking on a bigger portion, a bigger responsibility of the insurance. And this, for service, we currently have service longevity and incentive longevity. Those things are staying the same. What is changing is that those benefits will still be applied to the employees that we have October 1st, 2018, hired from that date previous. And new employees will not be eligible for this benefit. So that's something that is a longer term benefit for the, for the board. Same with the, with the retirement increment. This is something that our administrators currently get and it will be, they will be grandfathered to continue to receive those benefits. This benefit, any employee hired October 1st, 2018 or prior, are continued to be eligible for this, but it is reduced to a one year and not a three year benefit. Another big thing that, that we put into place in this contract would be around reduction in force, just laying out a clear pathway for our employees to understand what happens when there's a reduction in force and what their rights are and what, how they would be eligible to move it to different positions potentially if that were to occur. And then what everyone is waiting for is the salary schedule. In the past, we've had a salary range and, and what this contract does is create a salary schedule with steps and, and general wage increases. And for the four-year contract, first of all, we spent a lot of time looking at the committee, worked really hard reviewing information from other districts and what other contracts were coming out at, at this time, what other districts had done with their contracts. And we feel very comfortable with where we landed and that it's very fair for both the employees and for the town. And for the four-year plan, this is 2018 through 2021, 2022, it's an overall increase of 7.9% within, it averages about 2% a year, obviously slightly less than that per year. And again, that's not of the, when I first saw that, I thought, oh my gosh, that's of the overall budget and it absolutely is not. It's just for those, what is it, 24 employees? 24 employees for, just for those, that's the increase for that portion of the salaries. Am I missing anything?
I just want to add that the, the portion that's, that's retro July 1 of 2018 through this current year, the increase in salaries, that's already, that's what's something that we budgeted for in, in, already in this budget. So it's not additional money that we need to find. We did budget for a slight increase in our administrator salary this year.
Also, this is, when the, when we prepare the budget every year, this is how we, this is how we plan for it. Sometimes there are changes at the end, but this is essentially how we've planned in the past. So it is very similar to our, our current practice, not a lot changes from what we are currently doing with this.
Any, Dr. Braverman?
So the 24 administrators always had healthcare, they always had retirement. This is just codifying.
So they have very similar benefits to what they had. Some of the numbers changed for contribution, you know, life insurance went up slightly and those two, the actual costs of the board kind of canceled each other out there for the first year. But it's, it's just putting it into a, a formal contract for the union. Any further question or discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
I'd just like to thank the committee and the board for taking the time to explain the details that Ms. Guyan has just highlighted for us. I was very pleased on a lot of the flexibility elements that was provided within this contract for the future, as we discussed. And I was especially pleased to see the, us honoring their existing situations, but any new hires would not be privileged to that type of a condition. So I, I just wanted to say thank you very much and appreciate the discussion that was had on this. So I, I look forward for the town council to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. I share those, those sentiments, even as the board chair, even though I was not, I was not on the committee. So last night was my first time seeing any of this information. And I thought, it, it certainly seems to me like a very fair agreement. Obviously, there's a lot of hard work that went into it and it's very clear that the administrators went into the negotiation wanting to have a fair deal for both sides because you can tell based on the contract terms that we've just discussed that they weren't, they weren't forming a union to, to make more money. They were forming a union to formalize some of their rights and terms of reduction in force and, and just to codify, or formalize the, the other aspects of their employment. So we appreciate what they went into the negotiation looking for as well. And thank you again to our four board members who gave up a lot of time and are, have already agreed, even though they didn't know when they agreed the first time, that there is a second union that was formed for our non-instructional administrators and there are six people in that group. And that negotiation is about to begin, so we'll be doing this routine again later on. Does anything, anyone have anything further before we vote? Mr. Brandon?
I think just for me, being my first negotiation, I think, you know, Stephen and Kim and Pamela and everybody else, the work that you put in to kind of help the committee see everything to be able to give our input and ask us questions specifically when it definitely looked like some of us, specifically me, maybe weren't getting what you were saying at first. I just really appreciate it. It was a great experience and I'm sure they'll all be as wonderful as that one.
I'm sure you're correct. Anything further? Seeing nothing further, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. That will be sent on to the town council to act within 30 days or to choose not to if they don't want to. And we'll, we'll make ourselves available for that town council meeting to answer any questions that they have, that, they have, okay. We'll move on to agenda item G, the superintendent of schools report. Mrs. Morocco.
All I'd like to highlight for you this evening is the magnet school enrollment. In September, I mentioned to you that we were estimating 153. That was based on what we knew at that time. And by October 1st, we're now at 181, which is a plus of 28 students who reside in Newington and attend magnet schools.
Mrs. Strohs. Mrs. Guyan, I'm gonna go first.
Oh, you already called my name. So this is, are, are those students, clearly they didn't leave Newington to, to, they weren't stu-, where did they come from?
You have to remember that some students don't enter kindergarten here in Newington, so some of those could be new entering. It could be individuals who have moved to Newington from another district and were already within the magnet school. And they could be students who were with us and decided to go on to a magnet school.
It'll be interesting to see the data because in previous years, we've seen more, more and more preschoolers stay after getting the free preschool, staying in the magnet school.
The full day preschool with transportation.
Mrs. Strohs.
Not now, and I don't expect you to know this offhand. Can we get a breakdown of what grade levels are going, like, do we get that information?
Yes. So we can give you a breakdown of the grade levels and actually whether they're a Hartford magnet or a Creck magnet or a Learn magnet.
That would be great. Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
It's possible my notes are wrong, but at the last meeting, the estimate was 89 open choice. Did we, so it says 80 now. Is that normal to lose that many right off the bat?
It, it, it can be that normal. Again, circumstances each year for different families change and some, what I have noticed, and I will defer to Mr. Frezzi, but some of our open choice students who are actually Hartford residents sometimes move and then still want to be an open choice student, but they're no longer Hartford residents, so we don't often keep them also. So there are other conditions around why there are decreases.
Where they are also, they enroll with us and they may start here, but then they get a spot in a magnet school. And that is a reason why they would leave here to go there and then those numbers show up. So we've had both scenarios that Mrs. Morocco described and that I just described. And, and it's, so it's very hard to plan for how many open choice students we are going to take in and enroll because there's always a drop off as well. Yet our classrooms right now are very tight at the elementary level where we're taking students in. So I can only take so many before I over-enroll students in those classrooms, yet then we have this drop off. So you, you never know that fine line because if they, if we don't have a drop off and I over-enroll just to stay at a certain percentage, for example, we could find ourselves with high class sizes very quickly. And that could be a challenge too. So we are in a difficult position when we go to, to put out for the number that Newington will accept.
If 80 is the, the number that we're reporting out to the state, does that meet the 2% based on the seven schools subtotal or does it not meet 2% of our population based on out of district and preschool?
We are right on the edge.
And what, would you, do you know off the top of your head the difference in the amount that we receive?
3,000 to 4,000. 4,000 for 2%, 3,000 for under.
For under 2%? So that would be a difference of $80,000 potentially?
Correct.
Okay, Mrs. Guyan.
Do we ever have the opportunity to offer more seats in, for open choice students later in the year? Like, could we open any?
No, and that's the challenge. They are under a specific timeframe and timeline of when you can open seats up. It actually occurs in the springtime and, and it's when all our decision-making happens. It's the same as that time when we're here sitting, talking about budget, what we're gonna reduce, what we're going to keep. And I have to submit those numbers then and, and that's it.
And we have somewhere north of 100 seats that we could fill. Is that right? We, we approved 106, 100.
Right. So then when it, when you then go to look at though, what class sizes are and where you can actually place students, the number gets reduced very quickly.
And any additional students that came in now, if we accept them, don't count towards the reimbursement?
Correct. Right now, it wouldn't matter because October 1st, the deadline has passed.
Dr. Braverman?
So, Mr. Frezzi, how do we recruit the open choice students? Do they, open house, do they come over?
No, it's, it is an open house. There are recruitment fairs in Hartford. We go, we provide materials, we have a booth. So we never have a problem recruiting students to come to Newington. We actually have a lot of students who are very interested and select us as their number one choice. Again, it's the, the seats, it's having the seats available without over-enrolling our classrooms. That's our challenge.
And if a sibling is already here, do we give a priority?
We always do. We always do.
I have a, Mr. Tufel.
Did we have any returning students from the magnet school?
Returning students from, coming back to Newington? I can't answer that with an absolute. We usually do, but I would have to go back and look at the information.
I have a question on a different topic. I was looking in the educational technology section and noticed that where our, there's a plan to potentially move Chromebooks down into grades K and 1. I was surprised to see that.
We currently, Mr. Salerno currently has a pilot in one kindergarten classroom and one first grade classroom and we're test, two of each, two different schools, that's why except the game's just one. It's two Ks and two first grades. And they're piloting a new Chromebook for younger children. It is not a touchscreen, I don't believe. We had talked about that, but I think they decided against it because, I mean, it was maybe not as durable. And then they're getting feedback from the teachers and feedback from the students and seeing how well it's working. It's just brand new, it's just rolled out, so we don't have really any of that information at this time.
And I, I would expect that at some point, they would come to the curriculum committee or, and then the full board to talk about future plans?
Yes, Mr. Salerno will definitely come probably with it. It's going very well right now.
So, but it's not, it's not a Chromebook like this then, or is it?
Pretty much, yes. Very similar, a little more rugged and durable.
Interesting.
And they would stay in the building, not go home.
Okay. I'm, I'm interested to hear how those pilot goes. All right. Any further questions on the superintendent of schools report? Seeing none, we'll move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities and our phones are open at 860-665-8736. Seeing no one in the audience and, Mr. Bishan, welcome. Oh, John, we have a call coming in, so I'm gonna... Hi, Rose, you're on with the Board of Ed.
Good evening. I, Rose Lyons, 46 Alton Drive. I just wanted to give a shout out to the NCTV crew for volunteering their time, which has allowed me to watch from home, not only your meeting, but the town hall reno meeting and the town planning and zoning meeting. I know this probably isn't possible, but the town gives the NCTV people a little bit of money out of their budget. And I know you're always trying to save out of the BOE budget, but if there were anything available to an organization like that, I would nominate them to get a little bit of the money that you have in your budget. They do such a great job and I really appreciate, appreciate what they do. And I want to thank you for the affirmative vote on the town hall reno. And I'm in year six of this project and I'm hoping that it goes forward. And at the TPZ meeting, they've been talking about the affordable housing at 550 Cedar Street. I know we don't have dialogue, I'm just wondering if perhaps someone can give me some guidance through a letter, which you usually do send, and I do appreciate that, as to what the board policy is. And I understand from what I'm hearing at TPZ, but that it's not that they go, they do not go into condo developments such, but stepping on Cedar Street to me is a very dangerous situation. And they're projecting that 32 students, and I don't know where they get the figure from, other than a study that was done, 32 students would be attending Newington schools, half of whom would be relocations from other parts of town. However, when asked if Newington residents would be given preference for housing at 550 Cedar Street, I was told that they can't do that because of the financing rules. So I guess my question is, can the board or whoever give permission for buses to go in and make a pickup at 550 Cedar Street? And the other question I have is how many children are now picked up on Cedar Street? They've referenced that there's no problem with pickups on Cedar Street now as it is, but that end of Cedar Street to me seems to be a very dangerous place for a bus pickup. And in closing, I'd like to address Mr. Sylvia's idea about his catering for Mr. Brandon's wedding anniversary. Boy, I sure would like to be invited to that one. But I want to remind him that he is committed to picking up my leaves for me in the fall, so I don't want any conflict. So thank you again and good night and thanks again to NCTV and to all of you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. And I will just note that we do give a donation to NCTV as a yearly practice, which is a great thing that we're able to do. Phone lines are still open at 860-665-8736 if you'd like to interrupt Mr. Bishan. Otherwise, welcome, please say your, your name and your address.
John Bishan, 56 Maple Hill Avenue. Wasn't intending to attend tonight, I was just downstairs for that same TPZ meeting and I walked into NCTV and saw that you were still on. I said, is that live? He said, yeah. I said, wow, okay, so I'll come up and visit. So I'm here, I just wanted to thank you all for the work that you do and the late hours you put in and your volunteer, the way you volunteer your time and efforts. Just to mention what, Rose, you're gonna be hearing more about this bus situation because that was a big sticking point at TPZ. So you're gonna be hearing more about it. It may be a moot point, in my opinion, it's a moot point because there's other safety issues that they can't seem to...
seem to alleviate. But just to warn you, you're going to be hearing about an explanation why they can't pull in there. I believe there is a light there, but you would be pulling out at a 90 degree angle to that, that's a fairly dangerous road. But your drivers do drive on the road every day, of course. So anyway, I had one more question, it just occurred to me because I thought about it before, where the transition academy has moved over across the street here. That is a school building, right? That is a Board of Ed property now or a Board of Ed structure anyway. So my question that I raised earlier, just thinking out loud is, you know, let's just say, it's a, it's a kind of a complicated legal question, but let's just say a person who is a second amendment person and they tend to have a concealed carry and walk through that property, should there be some demarcation lines around the building that say, this is a school zone? I'm just, I'm, I'm not worried about the, the students. I'm worried about the, on, someone unknowingly walking there and somehow being entrapped in a situation where it would be a serious crime that they could be in, in the commission of, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bishan. It does sound from Ms. Morocco's nodding her head that that's something that we're.
The project is not yet finished, although it's put together and it looks like it's done. There are many more aspects that have to be reviewed and looked at. And there are some issues with security. We need some fencing so students won't have access to the poles that they use to deliver the units. There is going to be some fencing put up, so there will be demarcations that it's a school zone.
Okay. Sign, signs or something and?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. That's a great, that's not something I had thought of.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming up, Mr. Bishan. Seeing no other public and no one else on the phone, I will turn over to remarks by board members and we'll start with Mrs. Tros. Okay. Oh, no, we, we have something left on the agenda. We'll start with Mr. Tufel.
I would like to congratulate Mrs. Braverman on her 10 years of service to our community as a Board of Education member. And I think we blacked tonight and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
I've enjoyed this evening and the discussions. And again, I'd like to thank the committee that did the negotiations. For Ms. Lyons, I did offer to take her leaves, but I did not offer to rake them. That's just for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Brenda?
2034. Save the date. Start learning your craft because I'm going to put it in my calendar. Love it. I'm excited about the next quote unquote board meeting because it's teacher of the year and I've never been able to experience that. And not that anybody's counting, but myself and Ms. Tros are approaching our one year anniversary. So that's, you know, we're going to catch up maybe some point if we're lucky. And the only other thing was welcome to Newington, Jamie Harris.
Okay.
He's the newest system principal at the high school.
Very good. Mrs. Sam?
I think tonight was just a really, a good night for us. I think we had great discussion and I, you know, all around in every topic, I felt like we had great discussion and it was a good night. Thanks.
Mrs. Tros. Mr. Visella. Mrs. Guyen.
I felt like we had good discussions too. I can hardly believe we've only been here for four hours. But that, yeah, I'm glad that we got to talk with the architect and look at those plans. It's nice to actually see that here and, and I'm pleased that we were able to talk through some of our questions about that. And yes, thank you to everyone and good night.
Dr. Braverman?
I agree, Emily. The plans were great to see because I haven't been on the committee, so that was very illustrative. There is a, a science and math conference on October 27th. William Pettit is putting it on. Is it free?
It is free.
So who's paying for it? I was going to call him and ask him. It's at the convention center. Yeah. I'm going to go and see what they're. So we can all go. So there are just an update, 12 students in the dual enrollment program at Central. So I was happy about that. And Mrs. Morocco and I are going to work with one of the presenters from United Technologies, Frank Joseph, and see if they'll fund a, a teacher for the aerospace academy. What have we got to lose?
We don't have anything.
He didn't say no. He was at Central and I brought it up and he didn't say no, so.
Thank you for your efforts, Dr. Braverman. They, they are not unrecognized. I will say that, like Mr. Brenda, I'm excited about the teacher of the year dinner in two weeks. I can't wait to honor Mrs. Freese. It was, I think the last board function that I was at was the, the meeting with the state committee for teacher of the year where she is a finalist and we have not heard yet, at least they won't tell us if they did here. Where we met and a bunch of the board members who were able went and met for a little bit with some of the committee members from across the state who are looking at all four of the finalists. And it was just such a pleasure to talk about Jen for, for that time and how incredible she, and really reflect on how big of a difference she has made in our district as we moved into the academies at the middle school. She started that program with us and without her as that starting person, it's hard to think of all the things that we've accomplished as a result of it without her. She's made a huge impact, so I'm excited to honor her in two weeks. And I think that's really all I have. Our next board meeting, for anyone tuning in, at this table is November 14th. And that's it. With that, I will call for a motion to adjourn by Mr. Tufel, seconded. Seconded by Mrs. Guyen. All in favor? Aye. We will adjourn at 10:17 PM. Thank you.